Maybe the foul, maybe the dry.
You said you hadn't said anything bad about being in the paper.
Not, not as recent.
I think one year was real rough. And I played all ten with the good team.
Yes, sir.
But it's given. They're torturing right now.
Well, you know. It meets the description. Remember, so I mean, you can't. You're being, you're not a government sheriff. And you're bad for the area.
Wait for the county.
Usually it ends up in a civil.
Stranger things. I've seen some of that after a.
Get like a title word done.
Somebody grading them. Someone kind of shows up on their working journey. If you ever, I don't know. What was that? It isn't. You have surprise. Something crossing. That's what I think. Kind of, kind of rough. But they're thorough. Honestly, we didn't see you, did we? Cold.
Yes.
Well, yeah. I hope that there's a problem. You don't go down big rock and all just smash it. I moved a little bit of rock up that pole. It's been a little while.
That's dog.
It wasn't foul.
I'll leave them, but only you.
It's one of those Friday.
Hindsight.
I think you figured out how many. The problem. Make that out of, you play it now. Right. Silver hook.
And they saw a green thing on the silver.
Right on with the cup. A thousand dollars. Kind of hurt. If you can get them. Yeah, man, so. Kind of harsh. We'll go ahead and get started. Lord in heaven, we thank you, rest in peace, goodness in your mercy. Bless your name because your name is the only name we've been taught. That man can change a man's heart. Thank you now for what you've done thus far. Be thankful for what you're going to do in the future. And follow the S T U building commissioners that you make the best decision for this position. Thank you now and we bless you. Oh, we do pray for those people in Ukraine and Russia. We pray for peace all over this land and country. We thank you again and we bless you. Jesus name my prayer. Amen.
The allegiance to the empire of the highest strength of America and to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like the weather, one meeting this Tuesday at four AM. We have a conference line set up. The number is one nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two. Access code is three two three four seven pound. This is not a toll free number and you may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. When the chair, chairperson ladies at the meeting for public comment, please follow the line instructor. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. Moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak in three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. A commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. That's soon, we will move to number three, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to see agenda item made during the meeting. That the Ringer Ridge issue has already been voted on and a decision by the judge of this court was made to proceed the building and new bridge due to the timing on the 30th of June. It was already been through this vote on it.
Can I have a favor of that? I'd like to hear what Mr. Howard has to say in respect of discussion this, this bridge.
I'd like to hear it all again, too.
I will follow it. Here.
All right, got number three, approval of the agenda. Motion. And a motion to approve the agenda, that's second.
Second.
Second, all in favor. All right. Uh, move to consent items, everyone have a chance to look over your consent items.
Want you to approve?
Want you to approve our consent items, that's second. Second, all in favor to approve our consent.
Aye.
We're going to announce the bid's public hearing. Board received bids for the debris management. How to do it by John Root. All right, we received, um, eight bids, I believe, for the management, debris management. And I understand it's not a, uh, it's not like a grand total price on it. It's a bunch of different stuff. So the bid committee will, um, go through, well, open them up tonight and announce two bids. And then, uh, the big committee, a second, and go through and determine, um, and come back to the board with recommendations. So the big committee is myself, Ms. Pemberton, and just one more. All right, and the first bid is from. Uh, this D and J Enterprises is the first bid. I'm trying to see. Further from. D and J Enterprises from Auburn, Alabama. This bid is from Luke's Great Services. And they're in Columbia. This is sitting. This is the same thing. Just the original from Luke's Great Services.
There's two chairs us from.
All right, this one is from CTC Disaster Response from Topeka, Kansas.
Where you from?
CTC Disaster Response from Topeka, Kansas. This one is from Ash Brit Inc. In Deerfield Beach, Florida. This one is from SDR. They're out of Greenville, South Carolina. This one's from DRC Emergency Services. West Palm Beach, Florida. Crowder Golf. Louisville, Alabama. That's the. Crap, that one was Crowder Golf. All right, this one, I guess, is Ceres Environmental, C E R E S. From Sarasota, Florida.
And that's.
All right, we're on the fifteen quarter seat pitch for debris monitoring. All right, so we received six bids for debris monitoring. Uh, debris monitoring, this one is from Debris Tech. And they're out of Tallahassee, Florida. This one is from Viet O'Brien's. Viet O'Brien's Group. And they're out of Houston, Texas. Thompson Consulting Services. Maitland, Florida. Gaster Program and Operations Inc. From Vida, Florida. This one's from Tetra Tech out of Tallahassee, Florida. Title Basin. Utica, New York.
And that, I believe, is it. Remember, we don't get any, that ain't got a lot of them. Y'all real popular.
I believe that the, um, debris monitoring will be the same bid committee. And we'll all get our reading glasses out and.
Start reviewing his proposal.
We did management and monitoring. Answer that.
Oh. Um, the management, um, that's pretty much the folks that come in and actually handle the, the debris itself. Um, the gathering and the monitoring, um, folks, they're the ones that actually, um, I guess, stand on ladders and everything else and actually, uh, gauge the amount of debris in each truckload to make sure that, um, all the, everything's recorded properly and you get reimbursed for that shit.
One way along, two sixteen, we're voting to see. Well, we saw five hundred million, it's an agenda bound one.
You ever know, um, proposals received, however, after the deadline, we did hear from a company who wished to, to actually submit a proposal. So if I could re-advertise this cycle, maybe we'll get one or two proposals.
Want to watch that second for a second, all in favor? On the seventeen, the board to hold a public hearing set this date at six fifteen PM. Or as soon as they're asked to possible to consider adoption of the resolution to abandon a portion of Wentworth Road in Shady Grove that is intended by the board of county commissioners. Read the resolution.
Do you wish to hold the public hearing first or read the resolution first? So if you recall, this is, so we actually had to submit a, um, application under our own name in order to, um, consider closing. It would be the portion that, the right of way that's on the, I guess it would be the western side. So on the left hand side of the screen, that particular, that zero point two six two acres. Um, so the consideration would be to abandon that parcel. Um, and in, in exchange for the parcel on the far right, those zero point two six one acres. So we would actually be exchanging those. But this public hearing is only to consider closing that road. And then if, depending on the input you receive from the public, if you wish to adopt the resolution, and Conrad, check me if I'm saying this wrong. I would say that this closeness would be contingent upon the execution of a sales agreement for, um, for purchasing the, the adjoining parcel that's owned by the Shaw's.
Okay. And I will just say before we open it up to the public of this acquisition and that our land swap, so to speak, is all driven towards, uh, enhancing that volunteer firefighter station in Shady Grove. To, uh, today, it's just a, uh, it's a volunteer station and they don't have capabilities of an actual, you know, like station one, I put around there, they have just, the land swap is very, to enable them to be able to, it hopes one day to have a, a full time firefighter on staff.
And of course, we did, um, I was going to announce this at the end of the meeting, but it, the actual legislative appropriation, um, was not, um, by the governor. So it looks like it's intact and we will receive a million dollars to, um, go towards building that station.
All right, so I'll open it up to the public. Anyone, whoever the public wishes to speak. All right. Anyone on the line that, do we have anyone on the line that wishes to speak?
We have someone on the line, but I'm wondering if it's to speak on another item that we could check since he has his name raised.
Would you call her nine nine six zero?
Say it one more time.
Nine nine six zero.
Call her nine nine six zero, uh, say your name and address. And we're talking about the, uh, land swap or the Shady Grove Fire Station. Just confirming that this is what you're looking to speak on.
Now, um, uh, the part for me that here is, this is Debbie Granger. I'm, I'm here for the key hacky bridge.
Got it, thank you. Well, we had saw where you wanted to speak, so we wanted to make sure it wasn't for this item. We just hope that was, and we'll be right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Um, I'd like to say that this, this swap is about as even of a swap as you can give in value, um, so, um, and also this runway actually serves no valuable use to the public. So, um, I would make a motion to.
What you think, we need to read the resolution?
That's what I was going to do, make a motion to read the resolution by title law.
Well, okay, there's not much title here.
Can we close? You can probably wait and do that after we do the resolution, then we need a second. Got a motion to read the resolution by title law? We have a second. Second, all in favor?
Be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida. I'm going to read a little bit of this thing so everybody can understand. Um, that pursuant to the notice of proceeding for closing of streets duly published according to law, proof of publication of which is attached here too and made a part hereof, a hearing was duly held at six fifteen o'clock PM on the twentieth day of June, AD, twenty twenty-three, to consider and determine whether or not the county would vacate, abandon, discontinue, and close certain roads in Taylor County, Florida, more particularly described in the proof of publication attached here too. At the time and place for said hearing, all persons interested were given the opportunity to be heard. Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida, determined that the proposed action vacating, abandoning, discontinuing, and closing certain roads herein, more particularly described, will not deprive any person of a reasonable means of ingress or egress to his premises and will not materially interfere with the county's road system. So it's, it's the beginning of the, uh, going to try and get the property for, uh, the volunteer, um, fire station in Shady Grove.
I'm going to vote for a resolution.
Okay, and do the bio, so.
All right, does that need to be contingent upon execution of the contract?
Sure it is.
Okay.
Do you need me to amend my, my, um, motion?
Okay.
Just add two, it's contingent on the contract.
All right. Commissioner Mooney?
Order.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Fable?
Yes.
Mr. Dempsey?
Yes.
Step one, y'all.
I believe the next step would be, once we receive the sales agreement, we have to, um, publish a notice. Um, and it's a thirty day process before we'll bring the actual contract back. And it's a 30-day process before we'll bring the actual contract back to the board for execution, correct?
The sooner we can get the contract that we can look at, the better.
That should be this week, yes, sir.
Mr. Lewis? This one dealing with Mr. Shaw, right? Didn't he just pass away?
He did. It's all in the books of their names.
They owned it by the entirety, so it automatically goes to Mrs. Shaw when Mr. Shaw passes away. Called a tenancy by the entirety.
Okay. I've heard that, but I wasn't sure of that.
That's a good question, though.
Right.
All right. You got to answer.
Ms. Shaw has approved that she's going to go along with everything that Lou had set up before now. She's agreed to go along with it and, you know, just like, just like it has been presumed.
All right. The Board to hold a public hearing set for this date at 6:22 PM or as soon thereafter as possible on the passage of the proposed ordinance amending Section 74-4C of the Taylor County Ordinance, which expands the limits of golf cart operation in Keaton Beach from Sawgrass Estates to J.L. Gibson Road and all throughout the Keaton Beach area. Public hearing. We have a public hearing, do we have anyone that wishes to speak? In reference to this? Anyone on the board? All right, anyone on the lines? Mr. and any commissioners?
Yeah, I'd just say, I've heard from a number of folks that are in support of this and I've heard from a few folks that aren't, so certainly I can respect everybody's position in this position. Understanding that no one wants to speak at this time.
We have a motion to either read it or read it by title.
Motion to read it.
By title on, please, sir.
Well, we have a motion to read, say, read by title on it, I'll play it.
Ordinance of the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners, which amends Section 74-4, open parentheses, 3, close parentheses, open parentheses, C, close parentheses, of the Taylor County Code of Ordinance, which expands the limit of golf cart operation in Keaton Beach from Sawgrass Estates to J.L. Gibson Road and all throughout the Keaton Beach area, providing perseverance and providing an effective day. Any public?
Any public comment?
Our campus will appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I did get a few calls against this, however, they did not wish to use their name because of relationships. But my position is, has not changed and it's not personal and it's not because I'm against the golf cart community, it's solely because of my concern for public safety.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I'd just say, I mean, I took the time to try to go through this area and look at the signs, area of safety and timing and speed and all those things and, you know, should this proceed, I try to look at that where the 25 mile an hour areas stop. And from that sign, as far as I can see and understand it, to the J.L. Gibson Road was 25 seconds. And certainly I can respect folks and their timeliness, I get in a hurry myself, but 25 seconds in that duration is really not a vast majority of time to understand. And I do understand that moving the signs would also include the increase and decrease. That was my experience in looking at this particular...
And even with the 25 mile an hour signs, they don't slow down.
It was pretty busy when I was there.
That's what's sad.
I'd say during the school season, there's a roll of golf carts out of the road, children getting out of the vehicles, running up and down the road. The speed limit needs to be lowered. And in the future, I'd love to have some signs there that blink when you were speeding and tell you the speed limit and then they, you know, give you, let you know that we're going into a, you know, golf cart area and you're speeding at 25, you know, and you're going, y'all see them in other places. And only in the future, down the road, we need to have both ends of Steen Hatchet and both ends of Keaton Beach, we need a roundabout at the end where everybody will have to slow down and go around about and then they get started along and then it'll be 25 mile an hour on the end. You know, instead of, you know, I've seen this in other places, Fronton and Beach is a good example of it, they put roundabouts where, you know, because they know people is not going to slow down, so they put roundabouts, that just gets everybody in the mood to go ahead and slow down and make a roundabout and then they ease on into the, and Steen Hatchet needs them on both ends, that'd be, I mean, that's just, that's fine, but that's in the future, I'm sure we can work that out down the road. But it'll have, children's going to be on that road no matter what on them golf carts. The season, if you ride down there about 10:00 starting, there's going to be children on that highway, I go to golf carts. I mean, there's nowhere around it, so we need to get the speed limit, slow down as best we can, and somebody gets hurt, you know, they just get hurt and I hate it, but, you know, we've had accidents here in terrible people hit golf carts, but they run areas where 45, 50 mile an hour speed limit, too, you know, so that's just, we need to slow down as much as we can, where I am.
You want? I think if you focus the speed 25 mile an hour, you just have to abide by the law. That's what I always told them, we were, that's the law, that's what we do. You know, I couldn't understand it being a, someone named it, you know, slower than sort of easy town or easy...
Y'all are getting a little ahead of yourselves. This is the ordinance that allows the golf cart may be operated from Keaton Beach to J.L. Gibson Road all throughout Keaton Beach. The next ordinance is the 25-hour one, it's next on your agenda.
Well, that would extend this zone.
Oh, it will, it will, but...
Be 25 mile an hour to J.L. Gibson Road.
You got ahead of your brother.
You need to be talking about Keaton Beach, I'm 25 mile an hour throughout Keaton Beach.
Can I ask a question? Conrad, do we need to set that by resolution after the ordinance is passed, to actually set the speed limit?
Well, yes, we do, because, but the next ordinance is the one on, on Steen Hatchet.
I think that's, right, allowing golf cart operations on roads with posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less, right?
I heard 25 miles an hour and I was thinking, you know, let's try and stay with...
So if the Board adopts this resolution tonight, we'll still need...
It is ordinance tonight.
It's red, ordinance tonight, excuse me, we'll still need to bring a resolution back to the Board to set the speed limit, okay?
To be consistent.
If I'm not mistaken, the speed limit's already 25 miles an hour all over Keaton Beach from, it's down by the bike ramp. J.L. Gibson Road is over 25, right? Thirty-five, and then it goes 25 to 25 seconds, he was talking about.
Well, let's make sure...
The rest of it, 25 mile an hour.
Coming into Keaton from Steen Hatchet is a 25 mile for Sawgrass?
Right there at Sawgrass.
I think, I think we can, and I can speak on behalf of this, but I think we could go along with the same ordeal that we're dealing with in Steen Hatchet, it's still part of our beach community and it's part of that, you know, venture and laid-back atmosphere when you're at the beach. So I would like to see that, you know, the 25 mile an hour be adopted for golf, golf cart usage.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I'm just, I just had a question about procedure.
So, we'll need a motion to... Pass this ordinance?
I might as well do that.
We have a motion to pass the ordinance, we have a second. Second, roll call. Yeah, so Commissioner Mooney? Mr. Newman? Mr. Feagle? Mr. Dempsey?
Yes.
Commissioner English?
Yes.
We're bringing back the resolution.
Do it, we'll do it.
We'll bring back the resolution?
Yes, sir. Not, not this minute.
Well, all right. When we have a resolution, man.
When would be that fashion, I guess, is what the chairman wants to do.
It would be the June 10th meeting, or, excuse me, July 10th meeting.
The next resolution.
It'll be done tomorrow, I believe.
I hope they're back tomorrow, I don't think Mr. Feagle, thank you, though.
We'll call y'all all back tomorrow.
We want to hold a public hearing set for this day at 6:25 PM or as soon thereafter as possible on the passage of the proposed ordinance amending Section 74-4C of the Code of Taylor County, Florida, to add that golf carts are now allowed on all county-maintained roads in Steen Hatchet, Florida.
An ordinance amending Section 74-4C of the Code of Taylor County, Florida, to add that golf carts are now allowed on all county-maintained roads in Steen Hatchet, Florida, with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less, and all requirements on golf carts remain in full force and effect, providing perseverance and providing an effective day.
You don't get an opportunity to speak on this?
This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public. Congress? You will state your name and address?
Anne Marie Goshere, 208 Sugar Hill Road, Steen Hatchet, Florida. Dear Board of County Commissioners from Taylor County, Florida. First of all, I am not anti-golf cart, but I am anti-non-transparency. Transparency promotes accountability and provides information for citizens about what their government is doing, says President Obama in 2009. Openness will strengthen our democracy and promote efficiency and effectiveness in government. The original notice in May 10th newspaper stated that the meeting on June 5th, 2023, would include a conversation about the proposed ordinance change for speed limits throughout Steen Hatchet. The meeting was then changed for Michael Newman on Facebook to June 20th, 2023, that would be today. He stated that the fact that there was a technical error in producing that ad in the paper for public awareness regarding the hearing and that the new meeting for said ordinance and resolution would be held this evening on the 20th. It was brought up by a council member in the June 5th meeting that there had been no proper notice in the paper for residents of Steen Hatchet since technically the one from May 10th was not valid. There was also no options provided by our elected officials for residents to consider, no postponement. Consideration for safety concerns with respect to vehicular traffic on the, on the main thoroughfare to Steen Hatchet was voiced by someone in the crowd on the June 5th meeting after the councilwoman sympathetically voiced her concern for safety of humans as it's better to have blood on your hands at 25 miles per hour than blood on your hands at 55 miles per hour. This was in regards to the fact that people would still drive to the roll-off site even if speeds were not changed. There was also an option stated by a public administrator to build a separate and extended with sidewalk along the road or roads. The way it stands, that Taylor County Board of Commissioners did not abide by the authority statutes and provide proper notice about a proposed ordinance change nor allow residents of Steen Hatchet to do time and voices heard, which is supposed to be denied. So my questions are to Mr. Newman, why didn't you, Mr. Newman, know the date of the meeting publicly on Facebook to June 20th and then go against the word of having that meeting tonight and instead push and push the vote for Tuesday the 5th? My second question, I'm sorry, is why did you all allow the meeting on June 5th to go as far as it did without proper notice, which included the date change by our county commissioner and technically not in accordance with the authority statute 1662041?
I'll address that, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Goshere, thank you for your questions. Problem with your statements are the inaccuracies that you say that I changed the dates and I don't have the authority to change the dates without board approval. So let me help you, you have the time to speak.
I have it printed, okay.
You can print it all you want, I know what it says, I entered it. So let me help you understand. My statements were to do with the ordinance not being included in the paper. And that the resolution, which was advertised, is what was adopted. So your allegations are not necessary and they're not factual, because the reality is, the resolution was actually in the newspaper. It was noticed to the public and it was adopted by this board.
It included all of that roadway to the...
It has a list of roads, if you would do your due diligence, then you could see them.
I did, I printed it out, I didn't see them.
Well, unfortunately, maybe you didn't have all the information, but that doesn't warrant allegations that there was some lack of transparency. Let me help you.
Let me help you.
I don't, I don't serve Barack Obama in your transparency notice, I serve the folks in District 3, Steen Hatchet, and all across Taylor County. So when I understand a request from the public that they don't have a notice for an ordinance change, then I'm going to try to help them understand what that is, and that's what my efforts work for. So unfortunately, it seems like you might not have all the information, but I can tell you, you can certainly ask...
I have enough, I have enough to know that that's wrong.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
This topic is to discuss, in favor or any discussion around this, accusations on who did, who was. We would just like to hear whether you're in favor, you're in favor, your concerns, or if you're not in favor, so that's kind of what we would like to hear.
Okay, great. I am in favor of most of the roads being changed to 25, I'm not in favor of the first street being changed to the 25, nor the roll-up road to the roll-up. I would, I would have liked to have heard of other options, like maybe from Waste Pro or something to set up a dumpster maybe in town for people to come and, because if that's their main issue, it's going to deal with trash on a Saturday afternoon, I actually, we live down there, so we're driving, we drive this road all day long and it does add time to the drive when you're having to go back and forth, not to mention the fact that you do get behind golf carts, and I've got this credit, golf carts are really not made to go over 20, so if you have a golf cart that's made to go 25 or 35, they're not considered a golf cart, correct? So a golf cart is made to go 20, and sometimes you get behind them at 12, and they don't, they don't pull over, and it's very frustrating. It's very frustrating as a citizen of Steen Hatchet to get behind somebody that does not want to pull over, they've got kids hanging out the back, everybody's got a cooler and a drink, and it's fun, it's fun, fun, fun. It's not fun, you're trying to work and get somewhere, you know, you're trying to take somebody to the doctors or whatever, it becomes less fun. And so what happens, it adds stress to our family situation and it just adds stress to the community. I'm not the only one that has stress about it, and I'm sure there would have been others that would have come here tonight because they thought, they thought that it was tonight, that they were supposed to have come, but then we heard through a grapevine that it was already approved, just approved, just like that, and that is disheartening, it really is. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I just want to understand from this lady that her concern, is your concern that you are afraid that not enough people got the message, is that your concern?
Absolutely, there was a confusion.
Or you may not have the representation here that you, that you thought you would have, is that, is that where you're coming from?
Yes, ma'am. That was, there was a confusion, and I feel like more people would have been able to at least been able to come and voice their opinions and say something on their behalf about the situation if the, if the, if the confusion wouldn't have been there, which it really was.
Comrade, is, is this something that we should table and bring it back again so that we are sure that, that everybody has adequate notice if they want to be here, if they can?
We follow the law with respect to the notification of the attempted passage of this ordinance, we have followed the law.
Mary Ann, I put posters in the post office, the van, everywhere around town saying that it's on the 5th. If you didn't see those, then you don't go anywhere.
I'm talking about the fact that it was changed on Facebook, it was changed and everybody was talking about it.
I don't direct any concerns to the Board, please. Though, I think we did follow the proper notification process for this. Though, I think we followed the proper notification process for this. I would agree. So, Mr. Durbin, do you have something more to?
Yes. You're allowing me to speak, Jim Durbin from Steen Hatchie. I probably have more commission meetings than most folks. We beat this thing up pretty good, we really have, but social media is not where I go for my, the gospel. Okay, I'm going to go to the, the agenda for the county commission, that's where I get that. Now, real quickly, I don't want to get off, off subject here, but as far as safety, if we allowed that, the Marina project to be built where it was with the congestion we have there, safety is not an issue for doing something or denying a golf cart's speed to twenty-five. I got the last business out of town before you get to the roll-off site. So I witnessed people speeding, but I also witnessed the numerous golf carts going back and forth. And because I travel there, that's my business, my wife Patty, there's also a gentleman here who's the last residence, we're willing to go to twenty-five and really work hard and bear with it, okay? But we don't always sort of the dump. So not everybody on that golf cart just goes to the dump. There are people that live out there, Roy's Road and all that, so we do need to get there. And, but the safety issue, I don't want to have that brought up because I'm looking at what we're dealing with there at the Roy's Curve every day. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Please state your name and address.
One mile, two oh six, Shreveville, Steen Hatchie, Florida. Does anybody on this board live in Steen Hatchie? Anybody? I've had a place there since two thousand.
Two thousand.
Oh, okay. I've had a place there since two thousand and it was peaceful. But I live on a road that's twenty-five miles per hour and the residents that live on the road pretty much, see all the time comes that century, pretty much drive twenty-five miles per hour. What does not drive twenty-five miles per hour are the golf carts, the four-wheelers and people who've cut through from the other side to go to the dump. And I'm telling you, I have my dreams and I'm telling you, on the weekends, I dread it. I dread it whenever it's season like it is now for stalls because they are up all night long, sometimes run medication bills and them up all night long and they are back and pulling all night long. I mean, they consider this a party town and what we're being turned into with those RVs and nobody saying anything about how our places are being, or what can be here and what can be there and our property values going down, we're a party town and everybody's there just to have fun and do their own thing. I mean, loud music, had two or three in the morning. Where, but mostly people just racing up and down that road, these children on the four-wheelers and parents letting their, like, turn great, ride golf carts as fast as they want to as long as they're out long dead here and they can be drinking their booze and having their loud heart. That's not safe and that's happening and that's happening a lot on my road that has limos. They're wealthy enough to do that, God bless them, but they really shouldn't be allowed their children to do that at this stage. Not doing it all. And that is the kind of thing that's happening with the golf carts. And I wouldn't mind having a golf cart, but I really wouldn't want to ride through the dump, I'll be honest with you. Now, the zippers, I wouldn't mind driving with a golf cart, we all, all day long after night, but that's not the majority of who's doing it. And they do not get off the road and they do not drive twenty-five miles per hour. One person has gotten off the road in all this time and in the last two or three years, all this coming in and it's just the tipping. The boats came in, the big boats, that was a lot, but this golf cart thing is a citizen's thing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Paul Reed, I live at nine one nine Beach Road, I'm the last house out towards that way. And I'm in favor of anything that lowers that speed limit right there. Everybody's zipping in and out, coming in off the Beach Road, zipping and they got it forward, leaving down too, so I'd like that. And then last me, I complained about no law enforcement out there. And they've been out there several times this month, so I'd like to say thank you for that.
I'd like to let him speak. My name is Jeff Rowe for the one two zero eight First Avenue Northeast, Steen Hatchie. We see it all there. There's concrete trucks, delivery trucks of any, any kind of company that you can see, log trucks, travel trucks, motorcycles, motorized bicycles, motorized tricycles, regular bicycles, people walking their dog, and golf carts, two, four, and six passenger electric and gas. Then they bring them in for holidays and weekends, regularly. I have a couple myself. I hold credits on this saying that I am for the speed limit reduction, the safety. I'm kind of a noob guy, so bear with me. I've come up with some stopping distances for people that are on a sober plane, a dry cr, a dry straight street with good brakes, good tires. At twenty-five miles an hour with the usual two point five reaction and reception time, you stop at one hundred and twenty-two feet. At thirty-five miles an hour, that goes up to one hundred and eighty-seven feet. At forty-five, two hundred and sixty-two feet. And that's the average version. That gives you a hundred, what you're voting on from thirty-five to twenty-five is, I call it a kill zone, a hundred and forty feet of time that somebody's going to get run over at this point. And we already stated most golf carts don't go twenty-five. And I would be in favor of the signs that Mr. Moody said, a flashing sign will vote in, you are now entering the twenty-five mile an hour zone throughout this city. But I also would remind you that, what has been said and was said, people don't pull over. If your golf cart doesn't go twenty-five and you're in twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, you need to pull over. And that's, that's a, that's a conscience, that's just being a good citizen, you know? So if we put up a few signs that said, remind these people, slow the traffic, and when First Avenue is completed, we're going to have that ability for people to do that. I mean, it's just all about safety.
Anyone else?
Turn.
Took a rough day working.
Okay, you're welcome.
My name is Alis Doscher Junior, I live at two oh eight Sugar Hill Road. I also have a letter from my mother, eighty-seven years old, unable to attend the meeting, would like to read that. She lives at two oh two Sugar Hill Road. It would be her letter first, no more comments about it. Gentlemen, thank you and ladies, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is from my mother, Patricia Doscher, a letter to the county commissioner of Taylor County, Florida. I have a few questions for you in regards to the controversy over the use of golf carts in Steen Hatchie, Florida. Number one, whatever happens, your defense and what then will be the cause? Number two, why weren't, why weren't registered voters allowed to vote on the issue of golf carts in our community? It seems to me the democratic thing to do is to reconsider and rescind the recent notice of the county commissioners regarding the speed laws in Steen Hatchie and that registered voting in Steen Hatchie and the city and what happens in our community. Sincerely, Patricia C. Doscher, retired teacher from Taylor County, of schools in Steen Hatchie, concerned citizen. That's her comments. My comments are just going to be this, I don't think speeding is really, we're going to have to look further out in the future. I commend everything you do and I knew you, but you guys have a fine job. We need to get some kind of better way to move people around that town so we don't have this kind of conflict, whether it's a dedicated route through for golf carts or whether it's a be, just a better road in, in the first place to get us through town and, and not change the speed limits on First Street, at least so that we can get through town because I'm like a lot of people in Steen Hatchie, I'm, I'm not there for leisure. I work there, I live there, I've been there thirty years. Do the same thing Jim's over there, and yes, I am in there already. I'm going to do what I do, this stuff will I do without being in a hurry, get things, get things done. Now, I'm talking about seeing the speed limit, talking about bending to the edge of what I can do to get from point A to point B. I'd like to see them to First Street in some kind of real, resemblance of way it is right now at thirty-five miles an hour. I'd like to speak, Mr. Moody, just to your question about a roundabout, I think you're going to have to spend some time engineering something that will take a duly truck and a thirty or thirty-five foot boat on a trailer to get it around this circle. I'm not saying it can't be done, I think it's a good idea, but that would have to be part of the thought.
I think that semis and log trucks, if you go around, they might.
That's all we need, I'm up against that idea, I think it's a good idea in the long run, but I think the basic end of that, that, that First Street is a shame. And I, and I under, I don't know what the process is, maybe you're in process, the wide, the, the problem is the boat trailers keeping up the road. That's all I have to say, thank you, thank you for your time.
No, we appreciate that.
You want else?
Speed limit's only, already thirty miles an hour on the First Avenue anyway.
Dangerous, anything over thirty.
Yeah.
It could cause the roads in such a crowd.
Please address the board. Anyone else? Anyone? Do we have any color on the line? I don't have any color.
Do we need to all speak again because y'all know how it does in Steen Hatchie?
I think the, this board's probably been through this topic a couple of different times, so really, if there's any, no circle of discussion from the board, I would ask for a motion to, uh, pass it to this. Motion. A motion. And a second on the passage of the ordinance, in favor?
Well, I, I broke off.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Feagle?
Yes.
Mr. Dems?
Yes.
Commissioner English?
Yes.
That's the four one.
Alright. Public to Cliff, number twenty, Mr. Frank Howard, twenty about to discuss.
I'm here, I'm here to discuss. Proper way to do this, the proper way would be, would be to hold a public hearing, but it hasn't cost much money, so I'm running off the table, but even when I have to propose. I work for Mr. David Lowery, he's right next door to where the proposed bridge is. In fact, it's property probably the motion of anybody. We're making a proposal, I've spoken with Mr. Dunbar in the link about this, to not spend money on the bridge and then transfer that bridge to LLC ownership or take its liability off the county. Mr. Lowery is willing to do this and that's why I'm here to, might discuss with you folks, if that's something that you want me to go further in and explore or if you're going to tell me this is a good plan to say and I'll go do that. I don't mean that badly, I just, I don't want to spend any more of his money than I have, so we have to. And I understand this, they have run the board, involved in those discussions, but if, if, I mean, I, I can't ask you how you're going to vote, but I believe the proper way to do this would be to do an application to abandon my permission.
Well, it's hard to pass, you know, on the bridge, we've had a hearing on it, more than one, the design and also on the bridge itself.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's been done.
Then would it be a motion to reconsider?
You can move all you want to.
Then I will be back the next meeting and we'll do a motion to reconsider your, your decision to go forward with the bridge that we have now. You know, some of our concerns are caused by the county, what happens when the government money runs out and we haven't money to pay for it. That's, that's where we're at today and I would like to, I'll make a motion to do what you said, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
You can't make a motion.
Well.
You're not an elected county commissioner, you can't make a motion.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider and look further into the potential of the board, this bridge being transferred to an LLC.
I'll take it, I'm like.
Discussion. We need to hear a lot more. There's other people here that want to speak, this is premature to go ahead and make a motion and vote on something before everybody's had a chance to speak that's here, the ones that are going to call in and for this board. So, Mr. Chair, we don't need to vote on this right now.
You got a motion, a second on the floor, we do have a discussion, so I'm open to hear.
Thank you.
Mr. Dems, did you have something?
I'm willing, I'm willing to hear.
Yes.
I'm going to hear.
And there are plenty of folks here that would like to talk about most of that anyway.
You have?
Right here, yes.
And there's also, there's a number of the letters that were sent.
They're right there.
I think, we read from Howard, that's the letter, so we'll, we'll leave it, read those letters.
Howard, I don't know what happened, but she had them over there.
Hold on, I may have stuff to give you, can you see that?
I did give those to Mr. Wong.
Yes, they're, everything's in the folder that we've received.
Do you have different letters than what Mr. Howard had?
I handed them to these two.
Well, thank you.
I handed them to Michael.
Everything's right here.
All of them are in the folder, Mr. Howard has all of these, Mr. Wong.
They were all put in one folder. There are some four and some again, so they're all combined.
Should I be reading both?
Okay, the folder on your right, right, the one that I handed you has all of them.
Okay.
One on the right.
This is one on the right tonight.
Okay.
This one, where did you acquire this?
Wait, no.
Well, Dan handed it.
It was up there and I.
Mistakenly got it.
I did, mistakenly. I don't know, I don't know what I'm looking at. I don't know if the, I don't know if these are, are.
I understand as they are the letters of support.
I wasn't going to say it.
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question? Go ahead. Are these letters from the people that live in Granger subdivision?
It don't, it really doesn't matter where they live, it's just that we're, we're going to hear the letters. If someone in Granger, you submit a letter, we're going to hear. If they don't live in Granger, then we're going to hear.
Some of them have addresses, then, alright.
Well, there's plenty of people that live there and there's plenty of people that don't that come there. Ask them.
New York City Attorney, Tax Commissioner, I'm writing this letter concerning the Grand Bridge, I have a unnamed banner, I keep ten years old, I allow him to ride his bike and finish on Grand Drive. I feel safe with him on Grand where the waiting road is currently, I think the bridge is built as proposed, it will endanger his life, please not build that bridge to vehicle traffic. And that's signed, "Thank you, Sarah Merritt." This next letter is from Heather, I'm going to butcher this last name, V E N C I V E N G O. Longtime resident of Steen Hatchie, Florida, is the address that she listed. Subject, urgent appeal, prioritize pedestrian safety, no vehicle bridge on Grand Drive. Dear Taylor County Commissioner, I write this letter as an expectant mother who is deeply concerned about proposed bridge on Grand Drive. I regretfully cannot attend the meeting in person, but I want to express my opposition to destruction of a vehicle bridge in a resident who frequently walks with my five-year-old daughter and soon to be navigating the area with a baby.
five-year-old daughter and soon to be navigating the area with a baby kid. This project poses a significant threat to safety, the safety of my family, the existing pedestrian and golf cart bridge on Granger Drive that serve our community well, by a safe pathway for families online, allowing us to enjoy outdoor activities and travel without fear. The additional vehicle bridge would introduce unnecessary risks and potentially jeopardize the safety of pedestrians, especially children, and those using alternative means of transportation. Consider the well-being of residents who rely on the current bridge for daily commute and recreational purposes. Instead of constructing a vehicle bridge, I urge you to focus on enhancing and maintaining the existing pedestrian bridge, pedestrian and golf cart bridge. This would adequately meet the needs of our community about such as the dangers associated with increased vehicle traffic. As an expectant mother, it is my utmost responsibility to prioritize the safety of my children. I feel you as elected officials, prioritize our safety and the safety of all residents who use Granger Drive, or reject any proposal for a vehicle bridge, ensuring that our community remains pedestrian-friendly. Thank you for attending this matter, excuse me, for your attention to this matter, after considering the concerns of the concerned expectant mother. I trust your made decision upholds the safety and well-being of residents who serve. And that's signed Heather again, V E N C I V E N G O. I'm sorry?
Benzabango.
Benzabango. See, I wanted to talk to you. This one's from Bobby Crawley. Dear Taylor County Commissioner, I strongly oppose the construction of an unwanted and unneeded bridge on Granger Drive. The current old wooden bridge is perfectly accurate, it was rebuilt by the county in two thousand nineteen. We see no valid reason to replace it with a new structure that serves no practical places and makes a valuable use of it. The old wooden bridge is hot, safe, and a cherished part of our community. It seamlessly enters the surrounding and holds historical value. It serves our needs without disrupting the tranquility of our neighborhood. Please listen to concerns of the residents and respect our wishes, not pursuing this unnecessary construction of a new bridge on Granger Drive. Step purpose on utilizing taxpayer funds for essential projects that would truly benefit the community. I trust that you will make the right decision in preserving the existing wooden bridge, aren't the desires of the residents you represent. Sincerely, Bobby Crawley. Message, or this message, this letter's from John Dar, who was the original owner of the Granger home since nineteen ninety-six. I'm writing, excuse me, Dear Taylor County Commissioners, I'm writing to express the firm opposition of the county residents, including myself, to oppose the bridge on Granger Drive. It is imperative that you listen to the voices of the community and promptly address our concerns by abandoning plans which are unnecessary and costly causes. The residents of Taylor County have spoken, and the majority of us said I won't oppose the bridge on Granger Drive. Our safety and the safety of our walkers, children, and below pets are at stake. The introduction of such a structure would jeopardize the peace and security we currently enjoy in our community. Construction as raised as proposed would be in utter waste of taxpayer money. We have pressing needs to require funding such as improving local infrastructure and essential services. Our hard-earned money should be allocated via that would benefit the entire county, rather than squandered on projects that lack whiteness or are offered to no sufficient advantage. I urge you to prioritize the voices of the current residents and heed our concerns, seeking alternate solutions that address our safety and needs in way more forth. By doing so, you would demonstrate a commitment to serving the best interest of the community. Please take swift action in response to our collective opposition and reconsider the construction of the proposed bridge on Granger Drive. Show us that our voices matter and your willing work in collaboration with us for the betterment of Taylor County. I am only one voice standing up to many others. Sincerely, John Dar, owner of the original Granger home. Get on. This is from Denise Harrington, St. Hatches Flora. Dear Taylor County Commissioner, I'm a proud resident who was born and raised in St. Hatches. I'm writing to express my deep concern regarding the proposed replacement of the Granger Bridge. St. Hatches is always been a quiet and serene town, but recent changes threaten to disrupt the tranquility. During that effect, I knew the wooden Granger Bridge was lovers' win. Placing with a massive concrete or cement bridge not only destroys the historical and sentimental value attached to it, but also disrupts the peaceful atmosphere of our beloved neighborhood. St. Hatches holds a special place in the heart of this region. The wooden, excuse me, the wooden Granger Bridge has been a symbol of our town, unique town, unique charm and character for as long as I can remember. It has served both as a gathering spot, a place of connection, and an aesthetic landmark for both locals and visitors alike. The bridge is natural aesthetic, its wooden structure blending harmoniously into the surrounding environment, contributing to the tranquil ambience of our community. The proposed replacement bridge, replacement of the Granger Bridge with a massive cement structure would irreversibly alter the character of St. Hatches. The surrounding that we cherish should be replaced by a stark and industrial presence without a sense of the natural beauty of our surroundings. The tranquility we have always enjoyed would be shattered, leaving a lasting impact on the ambience and allure of our neighborhood. Maintaining the historical and sentimental significance of the Granger Bridge is crucial for maintaining the identity and cultural heritage of St. Hatches. By replacing this beloved wooden structure, we risk losing the heritage of our town and its history, that has been passed down through generations. It's vital to honor and protect these historical landmarks that hold deep meaning for the local community. Furthermore, to emphasize the importance of community engagement and influence such decisions, residents of St. Hatches should be given the opportunity to voice their concerns and contribute to the decision-making process, our shared vision for the future of our neighborhood, should be carefully considered, ensuring that any proposed changes align with our collective aspiration. In conclusion, I urge the County of Taylor County Commissioners to reconsider the replacement of the new Granger Bridge in St. Hatches. Let us preserve the tranquility and unique charm that made our town a beloved place to live and visit, instead of erasing our history and disrupting the peaceful atmosphere. Let us explore alternatives that respect our communities' desires and maintain the character of St. Hatches for generations to come. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust and am committed to serving the best interests of Taylor County and preserving the essence of our cherished community. Sincerely, Denise Harrington. Next letter is from Jamie Merritt, there is no address. Dear Taylor County Commissioners, I'm writing to ask you not to build a big bridge on Granger Drive. We really like our small bridge, and it would be a waste of taxpayers' money to replace it. A small bridge on Granger Drive is specialized, it fits well in our neighborhood, and has been there for a long time. We appreciate its simple and charming design, building massively, which changed the character of our area, and wouldn't be necessary. We believe that money for the big bridge should be better used for other things in our community. There are many needs that could benefit from those funds, like improving roads, schools, or public spaces. We want our tax, excuse me, we want our tax money to be utilized in things that really matter to all of us. Please listen to all our voices and consider the wishes, excuse me, of the people who live here. We ask that you keep our small bridge on Granger Drive, and avoid spending taxing air money on massive replacements. We trust in your decision-making and hope that you will consider what is best for our community. Sincerely, Jamie Merritt. All right. Next one here is Dear Taylor County Commissioners, thank you for all your service. I'm writing to urge you to consider leaving the wooden Granger Bridge in its current state and refrain from replacing it with a cement and steel bridge. The wooden Granger Bridge has been an integral part of our community for years, providing a safe and accessible for pedestrians. Its rustic charm and familiarity become symbols of our community, identity, and history. The wooden bridge is not only funk tone, but also adds to the safety appeal of our area. By replacing a wooden bridge with a cement and steel structure, we risk compromising the safety of pedestrians, particularly our children. The existing bridge design is pedestrian-friendly, allowing easy and secure passage. Introducing a different type of bridge would lead to unforeseen safety concerns such as limited visibility, increased vehicle speeds, or potential hazards associated with the construction process itself. Considering the well-being of our community, especially our children, it is imperative to prioritize their safety in making decisions to impact our infrastructure. The wooden Granger Bridge has served as a reliable and safe crossing for pedestrians and pedestrians. Maintaining its current form is a responsible choice, ensures the continued safety of those who utilize it regularly. I kindly request that you carefully consider the importance of pedestrian and child safety, and the historical significance of the wooden Granger Bridge. Please preserve this essential element of our community by refraining from replacing it with cement and steel. Please don't build that bridge as proposed. Sincerely, Jamie Merritt, a long-time resident. I have a letter here from somebody that is here. Do you want me to read this, or do you want him to speak?
Read it.
Read it. Dear Taylor County Commissioners, I am Mike Williams. I live at four forty Granger Drive. I'm writing this letter with great concern and a stern tone to emphasize the strong opposition of the residents in our community, including myself, to the proposed construction of a bridge on Granger Drive. As one of the only two residents to live on this road, I stand alongside my neighbor expressing our unwavering disapproval. It's crucial that you listen to our voices and immediately cease any plans to move forward with this unnecessary excessive project. We, the two residents of Granger Drive, strongly object to the destruction of the bridge. This perplexing to witness the disregard of our community's wishes, as we have repeatedly voiced our concerns as elected officials, it is your duty to represent our interest in considering the views of the constituents you serve. Furthermore, the construction of such a massive concrete structure holds no benefit for our community. It is what the costs associated with this project would be far better allocated to address pressing needs such as improving our roads, schools, and essential services. We, the residents, regularly impacted by this construction, failed to stand the bridge and would leave any significant advantages to our neighborhood. The proposed bridge would disrupt the tranquil environment we share. Granger Drive has always been a quiet and peaceful road, and it disrupts an large concrete bridge and destroy the harmony we have carefully preserved. The noise, increased traffic, and potential safety hazards that come with the bridge are completely unmourned and unmastered. In light of our strong opposition and the absence of intent, we would advise, before you listen to the voices of the residents and reconsider the construction of the bridge on Granger Drive. Engage in open and transparent communication, let us explore alternate solutions to ensure tax dollars are used judiciously to benefit the entire community. Pay attention to our concerns and perceive this bridge causing a demonstrated lack of respect for the constituency you represent. The urge you to prioritize our well-being and respect our wishes is终究, directly affected by this decision. Please take the proper response and maintain your commitment to listen to the residents and reconsider the construction of the bridge on Granger Drive. Changing and obstructive dialogue with us. Again, do not know the bridge. Mike Williams is one of the only two full-time residents on Granger Drive. Well, almost done, folks, I'm sorry. Try not to be marked on the day you die. Dear Taylor County Commissioners, as a concerned homeowner of Granger Drive, I'm writing to express my vehement opposition to the proposed construction on Granger Drive. I firmly believe this project would not benefit anyone on our road, but would have detriment on the backs of our safe and tight-knit community. Moreover, it raises serious concerns, serious safety concerns, for elderly residents, children, and pets. I strongly urge you to reconsider this project to represent the total waste of much-needed funds that could be better utilized elsewhere, benefiting a select few who cannot reside on Granger Drive. Granger Drive is currently a safe, peaceful community, where our elderly residents can enjoy their golden years as children and play free, and our pets can roam without worry. The proposed destruction of the bridge would introduce significant safety risks that would disrupt the harmony we currently experience. Increased traffic, noise, pollution, and potential accidents associated with construction things along, pose a direct threat to the well-being of our elderly community, members who rely on the tranquility and familiarity of our neighborhood. Additionally, the presence of bridges would likely lead to higher dangerous leads to increased traffic volume, jeopardizing the safety of our children and beloved pets. Moreover, it is disheartening to note that the proposed Granger Drive would primarily benefit individuals who do not reside on our road, while imposing negative impacts, negative, excuse me, consequences solely on the residents of Granger Drive. This lack of equity and consideration is deeply concerning. As taxpayers, we expect our resources to be allocated in a manner that benefits the entire community rather than caving to the interest of a select few. It's unfair that our hard-earned tax honor would be utilized for projects that enhance the well-being and quality of life for all residents of Taylor County. In addition to the lack of benefits for Granger Drive residents, the destruction of the proposed bridge would result in a significant waste of much-needed funds. Our country faces numerous challenges and demands, including improvements to existing infrastructure, public services, and community programs. Outgaining substantial resources to a project that would not address any pressing needs in our community is a disservice to taxpayers who rely on these funds to create positive change. It is imperative that we prioritize projects that have a tangible and equitable impact within the entire county. In light of these concerns, I urge you to reconsider the Granger Drive Bridge construction project. Let us focus on initiatives that will benefit our community, enhance safety, and preserve the peaceful environment we currently enjoy. It is crucial to engage in open dialogue with Granger Drive residents and explore alternative solutions to address our needs and concerns while making the most efficient use of taxpayer funds. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust your dedication to serving the best interest of Taylor County, making decisions that reflect the needs and desires of the residents. Sincerely, Peter Morris. All right, we got two, three? Ah, here we go. This is from Kevin Bonnet. Subject is concerned regarding the construction of a massive concrete bridge on Granger Drive. I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing as a concerned resident of Taylor County to express my deep concern about the proposed construction of a massive concrete bridge on Granger Drive. After careful consideration and discussion with my fellow community member, I strongly believe this project poses significant safety risks and would be a waste of taxpayer money. I urge you to reconsider this plan and explore alternate solutions that prioritize the safety and well-being of our community. Currently, Granger Road serves as a safe place for residents to walk, provides a suitable environment for children to play and ride around. By constructing a massive concrete bridge, it would not only disrupt the existing harmony in the area, it also introduces potential hazards that, look, it compromises the safety of pedestrians and cyclists. The proposed bridge may encourage higher vehicle speed, leading to increased risk of accidents and injuries, excuse me, especially considering the proximity of residential area. Moreover, building such a bridge would entail substantial financial implications, tax mayor money would be used judiciously, would not be used judiciously, ensuring that benefits the community as a whole. In light of the current state of Granger Road, where safety concerns are adequately addressed without the need for a bridge, it is difficult to justify allocating a submitted portion of the county's budget to a project that may offset the best interest of the community. Additionally, the construction of a massive concrete bridge could potentially expose the county to illegal liabilities and lawsuits, and the unfortunate event of an accident resulting from the bridge's destruction or subsequent uses, use, excuse me, the county could face legal consequences. It is crucial to carefully evaluate the potential risks and consider alternative solutions that mitigate these concerns while promoting the well-being of our residents. I strongly urge the Taylor County Commissioners to take a comprehensive assessment of the proposed project, taking into account the concerns raised by the residents. Consider alternate solutions that prioritize safety, maintenance, and current functionality of Granger Road, and utilize taxpayers' funds effectively, and engage in meaningful dialogue with the community to ensure that the decisions made align with the best interest of Taylor County as a whole. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust in your commitment to serving our community's needs, making informed decisions that would positively shape the future of Taylor County. Sincerely, Kevin Bonnet, V O N N E T C T, St. Hatches Flora. Dr. Tumal, I agree. Dear Taylor County Commissioners, thanks to all that you do for Taylor County. As a concerned homeowner residing on Granger Drive, I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed bridge construction on our road. Firmly believe this project would have devastating consequences for our community, making it unsafe for residents, and adversely impacting the advice. Furthermore, I'm deeply concerned that this endeavor would be a total waste of valuable county, state, and federal tax money. Granger Drive is currently a safe and harmonious neighborhood, where residents feel secure, enjoy a peaceful environment. Proposed bridge destruction threatens to disrupt the tranquility and safety we currently experience. It is crucial to recognize that the construction process itself may lead to increased traffic, noise, pollution, potential hazards for residents and their properties. Once the bridge is complete, it may introduce additional safety concerns, such as higher vehicle speeds and increased traffic volume, which would compromise the well-being of our community. Furthermore, I strongly believe the construction of the proposed bridge would primarily benefit individuals who are not residents of Granger Drive, while imposing negative consequences solely on us, the homeowners who call for our home. It's unfair to burden residents of Granger Drive with the adverse impacts of this project without the right to many significant benefits to it. As taxpayers, we deserve equitable distribution of resources to benefit the entire community, whether in favoring a select few. In addition to the direct impact on our community, the proposed bridge construction would have severe repercussions on the climate. Granger Drive is surrounded by natural beauty, including mature trees, wildlife habitat, and scenic landscapes. The structure of the bridge would require clearing and significant portions of the natural elements, leading to irreversible environmental damage. We must prioritize the conservation of our natural resources and our core sustainable development that preserves the unique beauty of our area for future generations to enjoy. Considering the financial implications, I am deeply concerned about the waste of county, state, and federal tax money that would be allocated towards a project that does not serve the best interest of our community. These projects that are utilized for improving existing infrastructure, enhancing public services, or investing in projects that have a more positive equitable impact on impact on the county as a whole. It is essential to allocate our resources, responsibility, and prioritize projects that provide substantial benefits for all residents. I respectfully request that you reconsider the proposed bridge construction on Ranger Drive. Instead, let us focus on the issue of the safety, well-being, and environmental sustainability of our community. Engage in open dialogue with residents of Ranger Drive and consider alternative solutions that address our concerns while utilizing taxpayer money more effectively and equitably. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust your commitment to serving the best interest of Taylor County, and making the same in the workplace of the residents. Senator Susan Ford, Director of the Agics of Martin Luther's Ranger Drive. Ah, this one is from Tommy Williams. I am writing that the significance of not pursuing the construction of a large bridge on Ranger Drive is essentially considered a potential risk and danger to pedestrians, children, bike riders, and golf cart users. Thank you. I'm sorry, I dripped slightly. Paul, someone's getting started. Don't start over. I am writing that the significance of pursuing with the construction of a large bridge on Ranger Drive is essentially considered a potential risk and danger to pedestrians, children, bike riders, and golf cart users in the area. The safety of our community should remain a top priority. Ranger Drive is currently a road that accommodates various forms of non-motorized transportation, such as walkers, bikers, chilin', bike riders, and golf cart users. These individuals rely on existing infrastructure and must be safely within the neighborhood, introducing a large bridge into the area would introduce potential hazards as it may incur increased vehicular speed, public visibility, and disrupt the flow of non-motorized traffic. The safety of our residents, especially our children, should be of utmost importance when considering its construction. Building a large bridge on Ranger Drive would expose pedestrians, children, bike riders, and golf cart users to unnecessary risks and accidents. It's crucial that the political prioritization there will be. I kindly request that you carefully evaluate the potential consequences of constructing a large bridge on Ranger Drive. Keep in mind the safety concerns of our residents. Please explore alternative solutions that preserve the current level of safety and convenience for pedestrians, children, bike riders, and golf cart users. By doing so, we can ensure that our community remains securely accessible places. Considered Tommy Williams.
Mr. Chairperson? There should have been three more letters or emails in that folder. They were
Our delivery just missed.
I've got, or are you here that wasn't in there?
Yes. I can read them if you, if you like, or
If they're in opposition, I would like to be roomed if you don't have room.
No, that's okay, I can read.
They're, they're in opposition to what you're asking for.
Yes.
You get out of the way.
Uh, we received three additional emails. The first one is from Mike and Stacy Whitaker. County Commissioners, my wife and I own property on Peninsula Road in Steen Hatchie. We would like to address the HOA agenda item for the Ranger Bridge. We are not for an HOA or one person controlling the bridge. We strongly oppose this crazy idea. The Ranger Bridge project should continue as planned to have the DOT construct a new and safer bridge. This is better for the whole community's safety and accessibility. The second one is from Joe Johnson. It reads, "Good afternoon. I just received a letter from FDOT stating that the bridge project for Ranger Road was on schedule and had a completion date of 2026. Now I have been advised that anti-bridge group has filed to discuss an HOA for this area at your meeting tomorrow. I implore you to put an end to the ludicrous antics of a few individuals. Replacing a dangerous bridge has nothing to do with the neighborhood HOA. This is just a tactic to impede progress, a power play for them to try and get their desired results. Thanks for your time." And the last is from Art Gilreys. Honorable Commissioners, my name is Art Gilreys and my wife Edith Gilreys at 309 Peninsula Street in Steen Hatchie. We were excited to receive the FDOT letter dated May 23, 2023, stating that the bridge project will proceed forward with a proposed bridge replacement. It has come to our attention that the folks that have recently opposed the bridge replacement have engaged a lawyer to change the FDOT direction by forming an HOA in the Ranger Development where no HOA presently exists. As many residents of the Ranger area stated firmly at the March 28 meeting, most property owners are opposed to forming an HOA. Having been members in HOAs from New NC, North Carolina, to New Orleans, we are likewise opposed to forming an HOA in the Ranger area. It is my understanding that property owners cannot be forced to join an HOA that is not pre-existing prior to property purchase. Giving the bridge to a few residents in the form of an HOA or LLC we call increased division and confusion as to ownership, liability, control, et cetera. I appreciate your work and thoughtful guidance in staying the course as stated by the May FDOT letter and move forward that the bridge replaced as residents fund.
One box. Not all of them. I have earned it from my wife, dead guy, on the home of Fort Park, for Ranger Drive in Steen Hatchie for the last 32 years. The closest follow-up pending Ranger, the Grove Bridge Drive, has never proven by Taylor County in the form of all the transportation. Strongly object to the bridge, as opposed to many reasons. The proposed Ranger Bridge Drive project will create significant safety issues for Ranger Drive residents and the family of the UBS. Ranger Drive is a one-way dirt road, and this new bridge project will dangerously increase the volume of traffic and speed of traffic on that road that cannot safely handle such traffic. People are going to get hurt and property is going to be damaged as a result of this project. Creates severe environmental issues that will spawn in Steen Hatchie suburb and local residents' wildlife and wetland areas. The bridge runoff, excuse me, the bridge project that is proposed, is presently proposed, contains no meaningful infrastructure contained runoff in areas that will be created by new hard-paved surfaces that will be created. Likewise, the present proposed bridge elevation encourages more vessel traffic than the power vessel traffic in the waterway, which will be sustained by the bridge. This waterway is more by extreme industrial weapons. Here is the current habitat and endangered species such as sea and shore birds, otters, and manatees that use that waterway to protect and raise their young. To increase vessel traffic on this waterway and have the potential to injure wildlife such as manatees, will also damage the underwater vegetation surrounding wet and habitat, which is so crucial for the survival of such wildlife. Finally, no offense, the current proposed bridge project is the epitome of a governmental boondoggle. Through the discussion of this project, it has become abundantly clear that the only reason that Taylor County and the Department of Transportation are pursuing this bridge project is the availability of free federal money under the current federal infrastructure. At the time when this great country is struggling to agree on unprecedented increases in debt ceiling and teetering on the bridge default under its current debt load, there is simply no justification for spending another $4 million of taxpayer money on necessary, unnecessary, ridiculously overbuilt, ridiculously expensive, dangerous, environmental-damaging bridge across what is basically a ditch, through a dirt road, not to mention causing Taylor County to carry the long-term burden of significant increase in mechanics costs to maintain Ranger Drive just because the money is free. Please be responsible, let your representatives, everybody in Taylor County, and support the money given. Just to clarify, I'm not asking for an extra aid, I'm not, I never, I never said that. If you have any questions, me, I'll answer them, just sort of show up.
Your request is to just reconsider a smaller scale dialogue.
Not going through the new bridge and, and I'm offering, offering the ability to transfer the existing bridge so the county doesn't have the liability to a nonprofit LLC controlled by some of the residents. That's my proposal here to you.
Basically, an HOA.
Two different answers.
I'm going to see if we got anybody else in the public, and I would like to say that some of you have probably already spoken on this subject. I know we've talked on this subject numerous times. So some of the ones that have spoken, I mean, we probably know where you guys are, so I've got folks that haven't spoken on this subject and would like to speak, then now would be the time to do it. Anybody got any questions, Mr. Howard, before he steps in?
You know, I remember when I was doing my agenda prep, and I went back and looked. Did you fill out the, the form to be on the agenda? You did. So, as I recall, your words were that your clients wanted to form an HOA.
And if I wrote that, I wrote that, if I wrote that, I was incorrect. My mother just broke her back and, and just broke her shoulder. I've been dealing with her, I took her beer to get on the agenda. If I wrote HOA, that was, that was a scrivener's error on my part.
I thought that's what I had, had read.
And again, that would have been a scrivener's error on my part, so I do apologize. That's 100% trace law, that's you.
One question.
Yes, sir.
You talking about having that for one individual where everybody lives on the road?
It could be structured any way that, that the people wanted to do it.
In other words, if the person right there by the bridge wanted to affect responsibility for that, that would be their, their business.
And, and it would be his responsibility.
In other words, it wouldn't cost people up and down the road anything.
No, I don't. And, and, you know, he's paid me, nobody else has paid me, and I'm here on his behalf. And if, and I've spoken with him at length about it, if they, if you folks decide that's the route you want to go, then he'll be more than happy to take on the burden himself, or if, would create a not-for-profit corporation or whatever we create. If other people want to join, he would have no, no issue with that either.
We give him the bridge, perhaps, but turn it over to him. What would he present to do with the bridge? I mean, what would he, what's his record, you know, what's he got?
Leave it as a pedestrian walkway.
Yeah. Would he raise it up where boats could come under?
No, sir.
Yeah, he's already discussed that, Trey.
Yeah?
Yes.
He didn't tell me that.
It would do that?
Yes, he did way more about it than I did.
Well, see, that would be a way to please the people up the canal that need access to the river. If they, you know, if it was in agreement to, to build a, a walkway or a copartway over the thing, that people could go and come with a boat. That would increase the value to people proffied up the canal, it would give them access to the river with a bigger boat that, uh, but you can't go down a floodgouge with a big boat, but you can, uh, that's what I'm asking. If he's into that, you know, doing that, that sounds like a good deal.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to remind the board that we have voted, and we're not going to give away any more county or taxpayer money. We've already been through this, and, and, and this is, this is not relevant to what we have already decided. We can't give away county and taxpayer money. This, this is wrong.
I'll have the board. Any, any more questions, Mr. Howard?
They get away, they get away land down there.
Trey, would your proposal restrict public access to that bridge? So it would be a privately controlled bridge that would be publicly accessible?
Was I, all I was only talking on the
I was only talking to Trey.
Yeah, I just, I'd like for any, anyone to address the board that needs to speak.
That was the only question I had, sir.
Anybody ask any questions, Mr. Howard?
Yeah, you said that the person, if we give it to the homeowners that that ticket booth, they would, it would be public, it would never be signed that people couldn't use it, the public couldn't use it. Okay, let me, let me tell you something else now. If this board decide to let it go for something like that, would it be a 100-year lease sign?
You can do it any way you would structure it, any way you want it, whether it's a 100-year lease, we could, we can never happen to do that, whatever, whatever the place the board is.
Now, the county has spent a lot of money and, and engineered and whatnot and doing this. I understand that. And I also understand that when we first started talking about this bridge, I thought we, the intent was to build a nice bridge, because when people brought it up to us to start with, I almost felt bad by not having a nice bridge down there. But since people just went on and got a grant and got this $4 million, but I wonder how many people served that $4 million bridge? How many people would have served? 10, 20, or 30 days?
I can answer that.
You get a, a daily trip count on 11, I think, is what you believe, though. So, I mean, that's, I'm sure it increases during the school season. I don't have a trip count if you, if you request.
Oh, yeah, no, it's probably because everything is busy.
I'd be more than happy to go do.
I'd just say, Mr. Tims, there, there are a number of other fellow affairs in Steen Hatchie that perhaps this, this type of revenue would be a greater investment. There are other reasons that would be of a bigger and better use that would serve the public in total. This, this isn't a residential day. I think that's one of the key factors. Heard that description of it being simple and peaceful and safe and tranquil, and that, and there, there's no crime in maintaining that existence. But to your question in respect of volumes, I, I'm not an engineer, nor do I proclaim to be, but I've certainly seen the number of volumes of traffic use, and there are quite a number of more heavily traveled areas in Steen Hatchie that I believe would be a greater use of this type of money, and not to the bad. But I do believe that there is a potential. I have had a number of discussions. So it's not just a effort on this board's part to just throw up our hands and, and that money goes away, but that there is the potential to request that funding be reinvested into other projects in Taylor County. That, that very likely would be a greater use and benefits of the
Okay, this is Michael Brown, FDOT. This money is designed specifically for bridge replacement projects.
Indeed, and there's a number of bridge replacements in Taylor County.
But there is a list that has to go through.
And, and I've talked with state representative.
It is not Taylor County-specific. If this money goes away, it goes back into the pot. And so this
Let me just tell you, I, I've spoken with state representatives and told them that there is ways that they can request and prioritize that funding. So I believe they'd like to work together in tandem with Florida D O T.
We have a list of priority projects that this money would be addressed to. I'm not saying a state representative couldn't try to sway that. What I'm saying is there's no guarantee that something like that could
But there's no guarantee that it would.
This money immediately goes back into the pot. What a state representative tries to do after that fact is up to the state representative, and that's a different thinking.
Let, let's just say this way, potentially, if this board were to request that state representatives seek out to, to utilize that funding which has been committed to this county.
It hasn't been committed to the county, it's been committed to this bridge.
Okay, for bridge replacement, thank you very much. But if, if our state representation were to see through D O T for the allocation to be committed to another equal bridge project, which is what this is testing, then it is a possibility for that to carry on.
Mr. Chairperson, if I could interject, I believe, but if I'm not mistaken, the guidance that, that I heard from our state representative is that we could appeal to our congressperson, and since it's a federal project, and ask that that money be reallocated, but that would be, that would be where our representation would step in. I'm not saying that our state representation cannot assist with that, but I believe that appeal would have to go through our federal representation.
I'd just like it to be known in the public that it's not just an effort to, to push away from the table in the presentation of this resident, this representative, the eligibility and such, and that there, that there are real potentials for that funding to continue to stay at the lane of Taylor County.
And, and what I don't know, I mean, we haven't received an answer. What I don't know is if that allocation or that reallocation would be simply to, to, maybe not for a new bridge project, but maybe reassigned to an existing bridge project. So I don't know that we could say, okay, we realize we have all these bridges on the list, but we want this to go to, to a new project or a new allocation. I don't know, I'm not saying we could or could not, we just don't have an answer for that. So I don't know that we could say, okay, we want this to go to, to this street. I, I don't
I'm saying the street, I'm saying that there's still the potential for that funding to be invested into the infrastructure bridging in Taylor County.
I'm not disagreeing with what was, what was told to us. All I'm saying is that I have not received clear direction regarding that process. All I'm saying is that I have not received clear direction regarding that process.
Let me ask you something. This fellow is Mr. Chair, who are you?
I'm sorry, my name is Michael Brock, Department of Transportation. We worked on project development and environment study on this project.
What do you have to do with the bridge, anything?
We did the PD and E study for it. The rendering you see over there, our consultants created. We did all the environmental documents, cost estimation, impact analysis, different concept design. We held a public meeting with the community, had outreach to them.
And the majority were against it?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely.
Absolutely not.
We were there.
The conference we received had a majority of 11 to 9 for the bridge replacement. Absolutely.
Let's go be, Ms. Lynn, that they're going to take this money, and they're going to invest it back in Taylor County. We do not know that. That does not happen before. Another thing to Mr. Dems, it's not about the number of people that go back and forth over that bridge a day. That's not in this equation. We heard from our fire chief, and we heard from our engineer about the safety that this new bridge bring to that community. That fire truck, this huge fire truck, has to try to back out. It has nowhere to back up to, nowhere to go. Also, and the way they explained it was that the fire truck could go over this bridge and get to both ends of this community. But I want to say this. About three or four years ago, the dickers came before this board. And they strongly, strongly advocated for a new bridge because of the deterioration in the safety of the existing bridge. They believed so strongly at that time about the unsafe conditions that they had brought pictures to prove their point. And the board at that time, and the county engineer agreed that the bridge needed to be replaced, and that that was the best option. Now, and since then, as I just stated, we've heard from our engineer again, the fire chief. And it took us, we applied for a grant. It took us over three years to get this money. And we were awarded this money. Now, if we turn down this money, I don't know how many hours F D O T has already put into this and spent taxpayer dollars. I don't know how many hours that our staff has put into it already and spent money. If we turn this money back, that's going to send a message to F D O T, and we may be in jeopardy. The next time that we're begging for money for something, they're going to say, well, you know, if we spend all this time for Taylor County, we don't know if they're going to keep it or if they're going to listen to a few citizens and turn it back. And we don't have time for that. So, I think that this would be a horrible move to turn down this money. I just think it would just jeopardize us in the future. We don't have any business returning this money. And I think that we need to move forward with this new design that's going to connect and it's going to provide access for a fire truck and an ambulance that don't have to try to back up. I guess, if you really know the truth, I've got a lot of these people wouldn't want that big fire truck backing up in their yard. Because, and in some cases, they couldn't even do that. So, you know, again, we've already voted. We went through a whole thing last year that we're not going to give away taxpayer property. And so, we don't need to be giving this away. We need to move forward, use the money that we begged for, and the money that they strongly, strongly advocated that we do something with that bridge.
Is this lady invisible?
Can I talk to you here? You know, don't sound like a politician. You know, everybody wasting money like that is a big crime. That's what's wrong with this country today. You're talking about giving it back? That's what we exactly should do. That bridge is worth it, man, worth it. But you can't even get a road truck, you can't get a fire truck down the road right now for the trees and everything else. I live down there every day. You don't. Maybe, maybe eight people a week comes down that bridge. And that's it. But that's what's wrong with this country today, is people wasting money, tax money. I know you said it was free money. That come out of your mouth. Yes, you said free money.
I never said free money.
Anyway, I think you did. Anyway, nothing is free in this country. It's been paid a debt. And to waste our money to build a bridge, that you said the people then, how many people in here will stand up if you afford a bridge? And I said, that's for you. There are a lot of people standing here against it. And a lot of people, you know, there's some back here for it. But I don't know who's planning on getting a feather in their cap over this. But it should not be the people in Taylor County. We're getting a bridge we really don't need.
I would like to respond.
My name is Trevor. I've got property on Peninsular Drive. And I want to thank all y'all who waited, voted for the bridge. Thank you guys. Thank you for the engineering, the testing. And we can't let one man take it. That's a monopoly. Even two men, that's monopoly. Reason there's a government body up here of five people is why, just to pollute a vote. One engine that comes across this border. If you let one man or two, that's monopoly. An LLC is real similar to an HOA. Yes, it is. The core purpose of an HOA is to create and maintain added community value by providing shared amenities and pooling money to pay for shared components, such as a hub, a community pool. Other purpose of an HOA is to provide and maintain a secure space where residents can coexist in harmony and enjoy community life. Community harmony already exists here. It is innate component of Steen Hatchie and always has been. It's exactly part of what involves Hatch Life. The only shared component in question is the Ranger Drive Bridge, which is being updated through grant funding. Cave Ranger subdivision is no place for an HOA or an LLC. Not only do residents already coexist in harmony, the majority of us do not want the gross outreach of an HOA or an LLC. An HOA would require a payment of annual dues on average. These dues range from 100 to 500 per year. This would potentially create an unnecessary burden for already struggling landowners. These fines typically include building of property amenities that all residents enjoy. Again, this application is not relevant here. An HOA can define what homeowners can and cannot do with their own properties. They collect dues, they can revisit warnings or fines. Worse, they can hold the potential to foot lanes on others' properties. This can dictate any change made to architecture, reactions on lawn ornament, holidays, policies on noise complaints, how many people, pets, rules of parking and schedule, whether or not you can rent your home, just a list of two. There are currently 11 HOAs in Taylor County. The vast majority are either condominiums or gated community. It is evident that an LLC provides value to such properties. What is also crystal clear is that an HOA holds zero value and yet carries vast, heavy risk to Ranger subdivision and its residents. Please, let's do the right thing for the future of Taylor County. Thank you.
I have one question for D O T review. I don't know where it's going to go. I mean, I know we have a motion on a second to reconsider. If I'm just project, is there a possibility to, not in favor of an HOA or an LLC or such as that, but from the county side, is there a possibility of reducing or scaling this down to a, what I'm hearing a lot of, what I'm hearing everyone saying, scaling it down to a walkway slash dockyard?
Yes.
I'm talking a little.
This is Melissa Morgan. She's actually a District Two Bridge Department.
Unfortunately not. We replace in kind. If it's a bridge there, then a bridge has to go back.
Make it a bridge. Make it a bridge for the walkway.
We need a bridge for transportation of goods and services for the public. Vehicles, not just pedestrian facilities, we got parts.
Right now, it's not a, you can't drive across it now, right?
Because it's blocked.
Okay, but what will happen when you build a bridge? You'll be able to drive across it then? Is it condemned?
Yes, sir.
It's a statement, is it condemned?
Yes, sir.
Can she please talk instead of him? She's been raising her hand forever.
Well, it's because my English lawyer and untruthful saying, I would like this break.
Ma'am, would you step up and take your name and address? Ma'am, we will control the meeting, we'll be here at the table.
I know, sir.
Yeah, you don't appreciate it. You see the look in your eye, you like to whack people.
It should be simplest. We have owned our place on Ranger Drive since I was in my early twenties. John's father built a house down there over 65 years ago. There were two places down there. And over and over and over during all of these years, with that bridge, as long as I could bring him up, with the bridge. All of a sudden, some years ago, when people started building houses across the canal. And even earlier, people, some people wanted to either tear out the wood bridge or they wanted to do something different, mainly tear up the bridge. Tear up the bridge so when you guys both can go up in the canal, we're in flood times twice a day for hours. It's about foot, we've given you the measurement of about 15 meters. So, no matter how high the bridge is, you still, a lot of the day cannot pass. And I am upset right now because things have been said that were untrue. Whenever this whole thing came up before, it was about tearing off the bridge. And Dean Fowler, who was a friend and someone who contributed right to this in Steen Hatchie, he would always get together with me and with others, and we'd write up a petition again. And everybody was on it, like Mike Williams and other people had gotten hundreds of petitions just to save our wood bridge. It's a beautiful bridge that fits in with the environment. It's a two-rut road. It's a dirt road presented by State Swiss, a beautiful wood bridge on it. I think my husband knows timbers. It was brought up with a family that had sawdust. We go over those timbers, and we look at them, and they are beautiful. Does it need new pilings that would be improved? Yes, but whenever I came up with you, every time I had been here about the bridge, it was to save the bridge. And if you go to that hearing, if you had attended the hearing in May, this in May this year, there were people in our neighborhood, everybody came. And there were a couple of people that apparently walked because a couple of them had had surgery, and why not everybody? And there's still a lot in gravy shake, and they live really close to the bridge, within, you know, feet. They just walked over to the bridge. But you think that they want to walk up a six-foot high bridge on that hill? You're saying, like, you need four people on our street. All the people on Ranger want to keep the bridge, just repair it and make it so that it's safe. And save a pile of money, save a pile of money. You know why that's important? Brenda Burper, and I have property on Ranger on Pixela. And number one, where's that attorney? That attorney speaks for David Lowery. Well, within the last two years, he has built a humongous boat house right across the street, right at the street of this bridge. He's the one that is fighting for it the most. He's having people call and do all that. But he built a humongous thing right there. Now, we just want to get under that bridge. And we can't, the size of this is. And half the people that has written in and spoken, they don't even know about the bridge. They, you ask somebody and they go, where is Ranger? Nobody knows that. Not nobody, a lot of people, they don't know that. But I don't know why a man would build that rope house at thousands of dollars and then fight us to get our little boats under that bridge. I want the bridge. We had many people that want the bridge. Half of them couldn't come because it was late notice. And-
He built that dock in that canal?
Yes, in that canal, right there.
Where the manatees are.
Yeah, where he hangs manatees and all that. I have pictures of it. So, let me see if I got anything else here. But the people, if you really want to do something, you get everybody's people on that subdivision, nobody else, not the hundreds they brought in, sign this paper for me. Just get the people through that Ranger subdivision and see how many wants it. Because there's more of us that need it to get under that bridge. We have three canals that comes out to that bridge that people want to get out on their boats from there. Now, Mike, he's already, his boat's outside. He has no problem getting out to the garden. Neither does Laura. We did it. We want the bridge, and we want to be, have a livelihood like them. Well, okay, the no bridge.
Address the board, please.
I'm sorry, no bridge. Let's bring that up. If we say do not build a bridge, who's going to shore up that wall to keep it from paving in? You, 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 you're going to have to do something. My time's up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank all you guys for helping us.
I'll make it short. I just, I don't understand why we're going to put that kind of money into a structure and I've heard this referred to as a canal. It is not a canal. It's a man-made ditch. That's it. You can build a bridge 100 feet high over this ditch, but you can't put no more water under it. You only have that much water. You're not going to get out of it. And who's going to take their boat out and go, well, it's going to be hot tide today, so I can go out in hot tide, but when it goes to low tide, I can park my boat on the other side? My recommendation, that everybody's happy. Tear the bridge down, reinforce the sides, that anybody who wants to get in and out of there, when they can, they can get in. You don't have to maintain the bridge anymore. It's gone. It's a man-made ditch.
People hike over.
Wait, one more. We're going to try a phone call.
I need to all social. Still have too many material ready. I kept a boat at the, Mr. Lowery's prior owners of that property. I kept a commercial removal boat at that place for two years. The environmental concerns were raised in one of the last letter that Trey read about manatees and otters. I can testify to that. Two years I was there, I saw a mother manatee, a baby manatee using that canal rig. Maybe not in the winter, the rest of the year, she was there. The other thing is, as Jeff mentioned, you can't put no water in that. If you want to run the boat, you're going to- You want to run the boat, you can and I don't, that's fine. You're not using your brain. There's not enough water, and that's straight up rock in the bottom of that, what they've left there. But it's not really conducive. It's also not conducive for boat traffic because you can't put a boat dock on either side of that ditch and get a boat in between them. So, the only reason I see that they wouldn't, somebody would want to raise that bridge is to increase the value of the property. This is my college said years ago, one thing in Florida ain't making them more than that waterfront. Now, I understand that maybe some people didn't do the diligence, bought property there not knowing they couldn't get out. But there's no reason to penalize the rest of the people living in that area for somebody else's bad decision. And that's all I have to say about that. But I just wanted to let you know that that environmental concerns that were raised in that letter are absolutely true.
I got two docks. He did two, if you remember.
Want to move on to our phone call?
Caller number three, four, five, two.
Three, four, five, two. Caller three, four, five, two. State your name and address.
Hi, this is Art Giori. Again, at three oh nine, I sent the email in. My main comment is, the only thing that really has seemed to change since I made, since our March twenty-eighth meeting is the, what I would consider the absurd proposal to privatize the bridge. To do one difference in privatizing the bridge than privatizing the road. Putting one person, I have total control of that bridge, negates the idea of what happens in the future. What if that individual sells that property or passes it on to us, to some of his grandchildren or whatever? And they have a different idea of what to do with the bridge. Perhaps either make a toll bridge or make a, a kind of bridge. I think it would be very foolish to pass that over to, to a private individual. As far as HOA's go, I think you find the majority of owners of the property of the Ranger Development strongly opposed to going to an HOA. If the bridge is only an issue with HOA, then you're really giving, giving up your control of covenants and restrictions and those kind of things. I saw these, some folks already mentioned. There seem to be a word of argument in letters. I, I don't really see the weight of just counting the total number of letters. Now, and obviously, if you do a word search or about all those letters, or a computer word search, you find that seventy percent of the same words are used in the majority of the letters. So that makes some suspects start with. And a lot of those folks, we don't know that they even, if they want to live in Steen Hachi or even know about the bridge, they do live in Steen Hachi. Because most of the folks we're out talked to that don't live in that area really don't have a dog in the fight. Obviously, they don't have a dog in the fight. But I really would like to strongly, strongly emphasize that we are, we're, the DOT has decided, decided to go for the, go through with the project. None of the positives of the bridge were mentioned in any of the letters. For instance, like was mentioned by one of the commissioners, that the fire department talked about not only the access of, I'm going to back up, but also the opportunity to draw water, well, parked on the bridge, that they would have much greater water pressure and could fight fires better. And would have, dominantly have limited access going through yards, but that's, that's fairly limited. So, I think we need to talk about all of those kind of things. I appreciate your time and that's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
Caller number nine, nine, six, zero.
Caller nine, nine, six, zero. You will state your name and address.
Sidney Grandis, Winter Park, Florida. I do, I'm talking down there and my family does, I'm not visiting my family. And we are for the bridge. And the lady was talking about the fire trucks and all, we're really for the bridge. And if we don't have the bridge, what we'd like to see is nothing. So, votes to get in. And I didn't know about this meeting. I was not advised of this meeting until today. And I don't know anything about the HOA, but we are definitely against that. I don't know why you would need an HOA down there. Anyway, I want to thank the board for all the help you've given us and all the work we've done. And thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Caller nine, seven, zero, three.
Caller nine, seven, zero, three. State your name and address.
Hi, this is Ted Lowery. Thanks for your time and everything. I've listened to all the comments and I appreciate everybody's opinions of, you know, about this bridge. We've already stated most of our comments in the past about the safety and I don't think we can turn a blind eye to the safety of pedestrians and the animals and golf carters on Ranger. Talking about safety on one thing and then ignore it on another. Fire trucks, they do what they do now. I don't think about mine to turn around in the driveway if, if it comes down there at five. Anyway, I am, I am opposed to the bridge. And that's, that's pretty well stated in the records. My goal is to maintain the bridge as it is. It's a community bridge. It's been there long before I was living, since I've been there, I've seen the usage of it and how it's used. And, you know, it keeps areas real and, and that's kind of pretty well stated. Now, it was mentioned earlier, I think by one of the commissioners, you know, would I be willing to raise that bridge? I, so first, I would rather the bridge like it is intact because we feel like the bridge is definitely secure enough to handle pedestrians, golf carts, fire protected. I would put rails up and, you know, just let it go. I consider it's a community bridge. If that's what it took, which is to put a, put a camel hump bridge in, you know, to the same spec, highest spec as county engineers have figured out, then I'd be willing to look at that also. You know, and a structured deal with the county attorney and the, and agreement all the commissioners. Of course, you know, since all the work's been done on the environmental, you know, there's different things we'd have to structure into a project like this because that's what it would be. Now, my investment, I've heard my name mentioned a few times, yes, I have a large investment there. I have a major investment from the build out I did on my boat ramp and my dirt and my boat house and sea wall. I mean, I fixed that, fixed that eyesore up. It was in there for years and I put a lot into it. And I do want to keep, make, keep and maintain access to it. I mean, even right now, since, since the county went in there and closed off the golf carts, it injured my access greatly. I only want to show you a picture of it, my wife, you know, carrying stuff across that bridge on her head to get to the boat. But anyway, I would look at a camel hump bridge with the, with the agreements that, you know, we can get, maybe some engineering help, I'm not sure, but especially environmentally and go through that. Now, all these people are complaining about not getting their boats in there. There's never been anyone get their boats in there. You know, if they would want to help fund some of that, I'd be more than happy for that also. But I'm willing to take it on my, my insurance, my liabilities in order to maintain that bridge. So, I just want to get that clear and I'll let Trey, you know, take it from there.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? All right. So, do we do, anything else from our commissioners?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, and I mean, I know there's a number of folks who spoke to this in a number of different meetings. You know, to look closely at what the consideration turns out to be. And, and you know, I don't think that it's the best direction forward to expect a, a limited number of folks to parry front of losing their square footage and having a greater liability and everyone else receiving benefit. And I certainly don't agree with this size of an investment on the, on the backs of the taxpayers, whether they're federal, state, or local. I, I think they're tax dollars and I do think it is very, very much important to be certain that they're invested in the greatest fashion for the benefit of the common good. And in this residential neighborhood, I do not believe that's the case. I don't believe it's right to use the label of safety to, again, compare or consider certain topics but not others. And I will just point out, I am familiar with hearing from the fire chief. But there's several assumptions in respect to using the bridge in response to a fire. And one of those assumptions is that it's going to be high tide. You're going to have a high volume of water to be able to keep up with the pumps and, and the demand on the water that would be coming forth with that. Not to mention the liability of trying to access the fire truck that the firefighters would be faced with. So, again, I'm looking at safety. I think that it should include safety in total and the safety of our residents in this residential neighborhood. So, my motion stands and that's the position of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm all about safety. That's why I was in favor of golf carts going to the road. I've been back, why I am advocating for this bridge to be built that has already been voted on, already been funded, already a lot of money spent on it. And I failed to see where putting this bridge in would compromise safety. It would enhance safety. And we heard that from not a commissioner or not a layperson. We heard that from a fire chief and we heard that from a county engineer. These people, in my opinion, are qualified to say what is safe and what is not. And I listened to them. And their opinion was that that bridge would provide more safety because the fire truck could go from one area to the other. Wouldn't have to back up. If you worried about the best of your safety, I'd be worried about maybe the fire truck backing over somebody. Back it over somebody on a bus or a golf cart. So, I think that the safety issue is not misplaced on my part. I think that we need this bridge. It would be a shame to turn it, turn this money down. And I've never said, we never said that a grant was free money. Never said that. I don't care how much money somebody's got. They could hire all the lawyers they want. They can come here and accuse you, but money does not buy me. I am one commissioner that your money cannot buy me. I make decisions based on what's going to benefit the most people and not what money can buy. Now, I just, you know, the cost of the bridge is high, is high. But I'll tell you, if we turn this money down, it's just like when Rick Scott turned down the money for the high-speed rail. There were many people waiting in line to get that money. They took it. And if we turn this money down, you better believe there's plenty of people waiting to take that money and use it in their counter. And I'd hate for it to jeopardize us in the future because we depend on FDOT money. That's how we pave our roads. If we did not have FDOT money, y'all know, we wouldn't be able to resurface anything. It's over a million dollars a month. So, we, we need, we need to keep a good standing with FDOT. And I think the right thing to do is to accept this money. And let's go ahead, let's waste the money that's already been spent. And let's go ahead and let's put in this, this bridge so that it creates a safer environment. I don't think just because you put a bridge in, there's going to be a hundred thousand people a day going down there to go over that bridge. I don't believe that. The bridge is for safety. We need that bridge. We don't need to turn that money back.
Do you want to add something, board?
I'd like to add to that. I, I'm not going to continue to listen to narratives and scare tactics in respect of funds. And I have confidence in DOT and the professionalism that they have, that they can understand. If it's a better investment to utilize those tax dollars in another location and an infrastructure improvement, then I'm willing and big enough to say then invest that in a greater location and use that in the best fashion. But I will not continue to be threatened by it. Well, they might not like that you do this, or they might do this, or they might do that. And they might not do those things. So, again, I, I'm ready to vote on this, this position that's on the floor. I believe we do have a motion in a second.
And I have a question.
Mr. Chair. I've been here a long time and I know how much. Mr. Louie, you've been here a long time. You know how expensive this funding is that we get from FDOT. Now, I do want to say this. This new commissioner has put forth a motion, okay? We can't vote on that right now. This has already been voted on. And it stands, right, Collette? Well, we have voted on stands as of right this minute.
That's fine.
With a motion to reconsider. Per your allowance, Mr. Bishop.
Well, I would have gotten, I'm going to say this. One of the things that, that also precipitated the vote to build this bridge was evacuation. That was one of the big things that had helped evacuation. And you need to think about that because we're in a storm situation and there's times when you've got to get out of there. And it has been voted on. And of course, I don't know that as a practical matter that there was, you know, none of us really knew exactly when you, when we read the, the agenda, what exactly Mr. Trey Howard was going to argue. I had no idea of what it was. So, you can always reconsider though. You can reconsider actions. But those are things I think that y'all need to, and also if in fact that you're considering any of the other things that have been presented here today or tonight is what kind of liability is going to be had by whoever takes over the bridge? Which the DOT has told you that the bridge is not safe. Your engineer said the bridge is not safe. Is the person that's willing to do all this, is he or she willing to carry liability for that? And they carry liability insurance if the bridge deteriorates and people are injured going over the bridge? Those are things that you need to think about prior to reconsideration. And of course, if in fact they want to do that, I would recommend that they give some kind of written proposal to this board to determine whether in fact what's in the best interest of the parties that live there. And certainly, I appreciate all the testimony of the folks that have come. I've listened to the letters. But if you ask me what I think y'all ought to do, and if you're asking me, I don't know whether you're asking me or not, Commissioner, or Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman. It's something that a proposal, a written, thought-out proposal that this board can consider with regard to whether or not they in fact want to reconsider the construction of the bridge in the Ranger property. construction of the bridge in the Granger property.
Plus, I thought this was probably done back in, you know, 2018, 2019, when everything was done. And, you know, I don't know if it was the deal to build this bridge back then as it is to not do it today. I've only heard that there were a couple of individuals that was really highly for it, and now today that they're highly against it. I've heard, I've received phone calls from, I'm at 20 or 30 people that's not wanting the bridge, and I've heard just a handful that, that were for the bridge. So, and I hear DOT's stance on it, that, you know, we could potentially lose the money, but we're put in a position today, I guess, that we kind of got to make a decision to either reconsider or, you know, looking at a different avenue. And I will say that I'm not in favor of an LLC or an HOA, but I'm, I'm not opposed to looking at some other avenue to find common ground for all the arguments that's on the floor on how about this bridge. So, do we have any other comments, the board?
You know what? When I saw the agenda that Mr. Trey Howard to discuss, I was listening for discussion, you know? I've become with no sense to make no decision. I know what we got on the board, the standing, we go ahead and build the bridge, and I haven't heard enough yet to really do anything different. I understand, and I hear, guess what you hear? I hear a lot of people say, "Don't build it." I hear a lot of people say, "Tear it out and leave it open," you know? Then I hear we have 25 miles an hour of speed limit all over Steen Hatchie. Then I hear somebody says, "You're going to be speeding up and down that road," you know? I think, when I think about it, the people that really, do you, what do you want Steen Hatchie to be? Do you want it to be a money-making operation, or do you want it to be for a few sleepers, you know, people who want to come and retire? Looked like it's a mixed bag. Everybody want to do as much as they can to do what they can. Everybody wants to enjoy. But I can understand if you don't pull a million dollars of bridge building there, you know? Maybe Mr. Laurie, they'd be infringing on his grounds, and he don't want to get rid of it, is that clear? He just wants it like it is now. I'm almost like Mr. English, I'm willing to hear another option. I haven't heard the option that completely satisfies me and satisfies the people that I hear coming here talking about.
I just want to say to you about your last comment, and coming from a commissioner with years and years of sitting here with experience, I don't think that we need to put all our heads in one basket. In other words, if you get 100 letters against something, it tends for, that can be manufactured and, that can be manufactured, and you know that, but, but we are sitting here and we are charged with making good, solid decisions on our own. And to me, it doesn't matter how many letters come, how many calls come, how many people show up, it's, it's what I am charged to do.
I'll just say that I really could get conflicted about petition because I hadn't, it ain't crossed my mind about a petition. I don't, I don't care about somebody in the bar getting some drugs out of a petition. I could care less about that. But I mean, I know what I'm listening to, and I've listened to a bunch of people verbally speak, you know, what they're in favor of. I mean, I'm hearing a handful of what they're in favor of, which is opposing the alternative. So, I just, at this point, and I mean, this was all done in 2018, 2019, and now it has blown up to be a big issue again today at the last hour, so we're left to make a decision to either reconsider, but I will say I'm not going to HOA or an LLC and turn this over to an individual to do as they wish or hold any type of control over this, but I am, you know, okay to look at from a county standpoint to see if we can find a common ground for all these individuals. And I mean, individuals that are saying they want the bridge and individuals that say they don't want the bridge, that they can get their boats in and out of the canal, or whether they can or they can't, I don't know, but I am okay to look at ways to find common ground to please everyone on both sides as we can.
Can I hand this to you? You probably already have it. This is why most of the people that wants the bridge could not come because we believed in that. Those people out there did not live here in time because they thought it was said and done. What does that say?
It should be the notice from DOT.
I'd like to know what she handed you.
Yes, it's a notice from DOT. Dear resident of Granger Drive Community, Taylor County, and the Florida Department, and I'll just say this was dated May of 23rd, 2023. Taylor County and the Florida Department of Transportation are in the final stages of the PD and E study on the replacement of the Granger Drive Road Bridge over the Steen Hatchie River, Bridge Number 384096. As part of a public outreach for the project, we are following up this letter to inform you of the final decision regarding the Granger Drive replacement. This project will proceed forward with the proposed bridge replacement with Taylor County continuing to design phase of the process and a tentative construction date set in 2026. If you have any questions about this PD and E study, please do not hesitate to contact me for more information. Where information related to the design and construction phases, please coordinate with the Taylor County Engineer, Detective County Attorney. So...
Mr. Chair, person?
If I may just inform the board, I believe back in 2018, 2019, when this issue originally came up, we did send letters out to all adjacent property owners and notify them of a public hearing, which may be something that you wish to consider, just to, just to ensure that all folks are aware of any future discussion.
That's a good idea.
And that's, I just wanted to let you know that we did that before.
I don't have a problem with that, I'll be honest with you. This has been such a big topic throughout, probably up here in, 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 some of the Granger Drive, about all that.
I believe there were some property owners that maybe were not at their property at the time, or maybe seasonal, but they still were property owners there.
We're going to send a letter out, maybe one of them like that.
Well, yes, sir, to the property owners, is what we, is what we did. And I cannot recall within, you know, I believe it was everyone within Granger subdivision. If I'm, don't hold me to that, but that's what I seem to recall, is that we sent it to folks within Granger subdivision.
She's referring to back in 2019. And what I remember is, I want to say 43, see, 34, 43, I forget which one it was specifically, because we, we made sure that those notices went out to listed parcel owners at that point in time of the public hearing that we had back in May, May of 2019. The overwhelming response at that meeting, and even prior to that meeting, and even subsequent personal meetings with individuals from down there, was consistent in that there was no other option other than to replace the bridge. That is what we used as our direction, that is what we used as our direction in moving forward with being very aggressive in our pursuit with Melissa and the other individuals to try to keep its candidacy under the Federal Bridge Replacement Program so that this would be an opportunity to not use Taylor County dollars, but to find other resources to replace this infrastructure at no cost for us. This is an opportunity that does not ever come around, especially for this class of a bridge. It is remarkable that we were able to get it from the time that we applied for it versus when we actually was able to get the funding, because it's normally a six-year type window, and it didn't take that timeframe. So, if, if this gets to the point that it looks for options other than what is the current track, it will be disappointing from the county's perspective because of the efforts that we put into it to try to appease. And what you said was you looked for common ground. Every individual list of, "I want, I want, I want these things," when we did the first meetings, those are incorporated into that design, every one of them. So, it's, it's almost like you asked for this, we gave you this, now we're being, it's okay that you gave us what we asked for. So, you know, I would encourage you to hold, hold, hold course. There are two options. Obviously, the PD and E has been recently finished. There are two in there. One is a no build, and the other is to build this bridge. So, there is not an opportunity to do anything beyond that, regardless of what some suggestions have been made. The money doesn't stay in Taylor County. The money isn't our choice to put on other infrastructure. This money is competitive. We were extremely fortunate to be able to be successful in that competition, and that is the result of it. And we've, we've made a lot of progress towards accommodating what we understood all the needs were. It would be disappointing to say now, throw it away and let's, let's just give this to a private individual to allow public transportation to go across something that we know today is structurally deficient.
I'd like to, I'd like to respond to that.
You've spoken, we understand where you're at on the bridge, and we...
We need our approval for something that looks like that. We felt our, our bridge would be repaired, just to bring it back to, we don't need something that looks like that of Miami and, and Steen Hatchie. But we, people love that bridge. We have hundreds of petitions to send it. It can be saved. There are wood bridges that are hundreds of years old all over America. I'm standing here to tell you that that is not, that's like a bridge of Miami. We don't want it. And there are two ways out of there. If you see to get a fire truck in or something, there are two outlets.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Comments, thank you.
And you know what? I see there's...
Yeah, it's over.
Mr. Chairman, I just, we do have...
We have a, you want me to read that motion?
The motion that I wrote down, so everybody knows, is a motion to reconsider and look further into the possibilities of transferring to an LLC. That's, that was the motion that I wrote down.
I would say that I'm not going to be in favor of transferring to an LLC if the motion is amended to look for other common grounds for an HOA. Not going to be in favor of an HOA or an LLC, LLC, but if we're amended to look for other, another avenue that you have common ground for the citizens, then I'm okay with that.
I can amend the motion to that, the board. The motion is to reconsider, look further into other possibilities?
Yes, sir.
I'll read, do mine, the second, reconsider.
The session, there are no other options. These people have sat here and said, "We can come up with some other options, but we're going to have to pull it out of our general fund. We will not have funding to do another option."
The option could be to take the bridge out and do away with the bridge completely, and the people up to this would be, not the man laid come out would be happy, and the people that live on both sides of the bridge would be happy, Tom.
But somebody, somebody has to shore up those walls if that happens.
That can be very complicated, really easy there.
We don't want to get rid of the bridge.
We have a motion, and a second, to look at other opportunities for this project. I'll call for a move. Motion is second, all in favor?
This, this is not a valid motion and second, Congrats. We still have a vote that's on the books right now. Now, which one is going to stand? The first one or this one? Nobody has rescinded of anything. This is an invalid vote.
All right. So, we're all, are there, we move on?
No, wait a minute, I, I didn't answer. This is an invalid vote. What did you say?
It's invalid.
No, we have...
What makes it invalid?
Okay, we have already voted on something, and it stands. This does not do away with what we've already done. This is another different motion. And in addition to that, it's always been my understanding that the people that are on the prevailing vote are the only ones that can bring up another vote. But we still, we still have something on the books from, when, May or March or whatever it was. I'm not talking to you, ma'am, I'm talking to you. All right, you know, we have something on the books.
We do. We do.
All right, do you have your rules of procedure, hand these shoes?
No.
You want me to?
Yes. Please, fine, now. Okay, under our rules of procedure on a reconsider, I'm going to read it out loud to y'all. Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I move reconsider the previous adopted motion. Second is required, a majority vote necessary for passage is debatable as to the reasons for reconsideration. This motion may only be made by a person who was on the prevailing side of the original motion.
Yes.
That, okay? That, that's what, that's, that's our rules.
Is that known, Mr. Clerk?
That's our rules.
I don't have the previous vote.
Let me, let me, let me ask, also add, rescind, okay? Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I move to rescind. Second is, I haven't moved this thing. It's required of a majority vote with the previous notice discussion on the motion is allowed, the motion may be made by a person who was on the prevailing side of the original motion. So, both of it has to be someone that's on the prevailing side of the motion. Now, this was, if I remember correctly, this was voted on in 2019?
And again in March.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It was, it was on the prevailing side in 2019.
Two commissioners.
I know that, I know Ms. Feagle was on the prevailing side. Mr. Dempsey, you were on the prevailing side.
I was against it, I believe. I'm not sure, I'd have to look back at the...
You had to look back, I was looking back at you, and neither one of y'all were on the board in 2019.
It would have been in 2021 under the LAPP agreement to move forward with the design, to accept the design agreement with DOT.
Yeah.
I don't remember that being anything other than 5-0.
Yeah, that was, that was when, when you presented the photograph, or the aerial photograph and color that you presented, and DOT was here, that was in 2022, right?
I think it was in 21, yes, sir.
If it were 5-0, then any commissioner currently could make that motion.
The only hiccup that I would see is whether it was a previous commissioner versus a city commissioner.
Well... But it would have been previously, if that was about next vote for the board.
Yeah, I think you voted in 2019 to go forward with it.
Yes, we voted to pursue it then, but 2021 would have been kind of the concrete vote of saying, "We're going to accept the LAPP agreement to pursue this project."
I think that was February 15th to 21.
And this is a current order that would have voted then.
So, the motion is the, the existing vote...
We want notified of that now.
Ma'am.
Please. So, the existing motion, the second motion, the vote that's relevant that's on the table. So...
Under our rules.
So then we move forward as it stands, as in we're, we look at other options.
Mr. Chair, no, that is not correct. Comrade, nobody has rescinded what we've already put in place. It stands. It stands.
Well, the motion is not to rescind anyway.
No, the motion is to do something different from what we've already voted on. We've got to know, what, whatever you do, what we've already done. We've already done something.
That wasn't the motion at all.
But the motion is to do something different.
No, it's not. No, it's not. If I understood the motion, it was just to look at other options. It was not to, to do other options.
Would you like for us to rescind what's already been done and then it's off the table?
Well, I'm just trying to, you know.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think I understand. You're saying in the rules of procedure that reconsideration is, is eligible, something you can do. Or you can rescind something that was passed previously.
Yeah, but the actual motion that was made.
Read it.
The actual motion. The motion was to reconsider and look further into other possibilities.
That's, that's what the motion was. It's not to rescind.
No, I know that. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. We have not rescinded it. It still stands.
It still stands, but it, the motion is also to look at other possibilities. In respect to rescinding that. Well, that's not what the motion said.
No, sir. That was already passed.
The motion said, reconsider.
Motion to reconsider and look further into other possibilities.
Yes, that doesn't mean that that's going to happen. In other words, if something else is going to happen, you're just going to consider the possibility of it.
It doesn't mean it's going to happen, but if it does happen, then someone's going to have to make the motion to rescind what's exactly.
Exactly.
And then we would move forward with the new option.
Exactly.
All stated over.
Exactly.
That's what the motion is.
Right now, it doesn't stand to change anything.
It doesn't change anything, yeah.
So, so Mr. Chairman, if that is accepted, the direction to staff and DOT is we're still on course, but you're asking us to evaluate if there are other opportunities to do something down there and provide that information back to you at a date certain where you guys can consider whether we have or haven't been able to find other options? Is that how you're wanting this to play out?
Yes. It's not like I'm going to be in a whole good meeting.
I don't disagree. I just, I know that there is an ultimate timeline on the overall project. So it's not something that we can really put a lot of delay in.
Yeah. So that we need to plan later. Put on, on the next.
Two.
Maybe.
And I would only ask one other aspect is that if, and I'm sure the guys behind me are sweating too because, you know, if there is any suggestion or hint, an indication of the types of alternatives that the board is even considering, obviously the sooner rather than later that you could provide that information to us, it would help facilitate us figuring out, is there even, you know, in the realm of reason, another alternative beyond the two that we have in front of us that would even be worthy of consideration?
I'll say that I am, for me, I'm ready, I'm, I don't have a solution at this given moment. But I'm open to hear the other, other opportunities for this, you know, potential bridge. Um, so, I mean, we've had numerous meetings on this that we just, and to be honest, we've had numerous meetings that it's really already done anyway. But it keeps coming back, so I mean, I'm ready to, let's find a solution and let's move forward and squish it to the bias.
Mr. Chair, first, are, do you want staff to reconsider the original, back in 2019, the original options, which were repair the bridge, remove the bridge, or replace the bridge?
Yeah, that would be the options that I think, I mean, short of just build a bridge, I mean, I think that is our other options would be, would be in the bridge. So.
Can I, can I ask my DOT counterparts behind me? So if we chose the PDNE option of no build, is that funded?
Anything other than replacing the bridge with a bridge is not funded by the Department of Transportation.
Correct. We would have to bring a cost place the bridge, with the bridge?
Or rebuild, or rebuild one half.
No, we could rehab it. That is an option, but it disqualifies everything for 10 years. But to rehab it, you have to do a cost comparison, how much it's going to cost to rehab it versus replacing it too. You know, it, when you, when you do those comparisons of those numbers.
First time I heard a rehab. That sounds good to me. That's the first time I heard of that.
Well, and it sounds, it sounds promising until you start looking at the structural reports that came out of that bridge, the previous bridge inspections and realize that a rehab is essentially a replacement. Because the, the severity of the decay on those pilings is such that you're not going to jacket them. You're not going to reuse them. You're going to have to replace them. Bearing capacity is, is gone. So we don't want to mislead you in thinking that we can go slap a few boards on it and it's suddenly good for the next 20 years. That's not the case.
But you did a lot of work on it.
I thought one time that, when we were talking about replacing the bridge, we had to signify your fix.
Yes, sir. Right there.
That's what I was saying. But I hear now, that ain't what they want. That's not what the citizens of the community want.
You, you have heard that some individuals don't want that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think, you know, that we should only consider the people that live in Ranger. If you live somewhere else in St. Andrew or whatever, if you own property, but this is the most, one of the most frustrating times of my tenure here that we have put forth so much effort to get money that's just, you don't get this kind of money. We talked about, we've met, we've met, we've met, and here we are. We're even going to prolong it even more. And, and then it just going to keep going on and on and on. Pretty soon, we're going to dig ourselves in a hole. We're going to lose our funding. Our time's going to run out. And then the taxpayers are going to be, they're trying to do something for this bridge when we've got an opportunity to fix it once and for all and just, and just saga.
So we kind of have a direction, but it kind of, yeah, I'd say I would hear, you know, 2019, 2018, to hear all of what was going on. I mean, it's pretty much slapping me in the face in 2020.
They're trying to tell me.
I, I get it. I understand. I mean, I do. I want to, I mean, I'm all about what, you know, just do what's right. That's why we're trying to listen to the people. And that's what we're going to do here, listen to the people.
And you're on judgment too.
What the people. I get it, and I'm just, I mean, if it's not going to harm anyone, I see where, if we didn't do it, I mean, and it's going to harm anyone, then I'm okay to look at another option.
It's going to harm a lot of us.
With all due respect to you, Mr. Chair, I heard this taken, and I'm going to fund anything else. So whatever other thing that, that somebody brings up, they're not going to fund it. They're not going to fund it.
It's, it's looking good today. People walking across it and they riding their bicycles across it. They're not using the off cars on it anymore. It's not costing us a penny, just like it's sitting there right now.
Well, you heard our alternatives say, if something does happen, you know, who's going to be liable?
That's why we need to block it off on both sides and pull that old bridge out of that hole and forget about that business. Or run it along.
But that's not what the people want. That's not what the people want.
Looking for, we just need to, you're looking reconsidering other options. That maybe back to the 2018, not reconsiderations on this piece.
We, we will try to present plausible options inclusive of no build, current build, and anything else that seems sensible.
Finish your repair.
Yes, sir.
All right, move forward to page one. Mr. Don Brad, TUC, Second Director, TUC.
I'll be quick.
I just wanted to give you guys a really quick update on the Cooks' problem. We got allocated funding for us to do repairs for the rubber, plus hundred, anniversary. Um, we're almost done with everything, which is we rebuilt the entire serving area, which was, um, we had four, we rebuilt all the flats that secure the building and put new fixtures and locking mechanisms on, better secure the building. We have all the paint ready to go. We're just waiting for a non-ready day to finish the painting. Um, the roof will be fixed by next week. All the leaks, all the screws will be replaced and it'll be washed and painted. Um, that all came up to $17,700, which left us $7,300 left over. I was asked by Commissioner Feagle to first, you know, look into the possibility of extending the roof. And I got a price on that. It was, it's $27,000. Um, we've gotten $7,000 in additional donations. If you take that and you take the $7,300 left over, we would need an additional $12,700 to complete that project to extend the entire roof out to cover the serving area from the person that we found.
Initial twenty?
No, it is $12,700. If that is what you'd like us to pursue doing, we will move forward with it. I've already got the contractors ready to go. It's you guys decide this is what you have to do. I make a motion that we make up a difference so we can extend the roof. It really needs to be done.
Should we know where the money comes from? Do we need to state?
Have the council reverse?
Yeah, okay. We have a motion to move, make up a difference. Second, all in favor?
No. I'll be sure.
Like, I'm going to walk the bridge.
Finish, and we can do like a celebration and picture and everything.
Fish fry. Put a fish fry.
Yeah, let's do a fish fry too. Three hours.
All right, here it is. Before discussing budget workshop, attending by Commissioner Feagle.
Yes, I did not real, I did, I think we're somehow or another, we've got, our administrator has, has, has agenda the same thing. So let's just wait and talk, talk about it now.
I haven't. That was, that, I'm sorry. That was actually incorrect. I need to discuss the schedule of June workshop, not the July workshop.
So it's, oh, yours is June?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you, can we talk about it at the same time then? Is that? No, okay, then we just need to set some time where all of us can be present at these budget workshops because it's extremely important to each one of them.
Yeah, my buddy.
So, um, whatever dates that we can come up with that we can all, anybody that wants to be here can be here.
You're talking about the regular meeting that week?
Just for the budget workshop, yeah, on budget, anything to do with the budget.
Yeah. I, I know the fifth, sixth, and seventh, I'm out of pocket. Anytime outside.
Fifth, sixth, and seventh, or what?
So it won't be ready until the 17th.
So it's going to have to be, right, it's going to have to be between the 17th and the first public hearing, which would be the 27th. That's our timeframe.
I would sound, uh, the 17th through the 23rd, but that will not work for me.
Anytime after the fifth, sixth, and seventh, I'm good. And Mr. Clerk said it's not even ready until the 17th, so.
The sixth and seventh.
About the week of the 24th sometime then, when I'm back, because I'd like to do that.
I scheduled a vacation when we had this conversation, I believe, at the May workshop for July 17th.
April Monday.
April workshop. April workshop, excuse me. So, um, I've already scheduled to take time to participate in the budget workshop on Monday, the 17th.
But I, I need to be here as soon as you need to be here and anybody else. I'm going to be out west, so I cannot be here.
Well, I mean, at some point, somebody got to figure out, I mean, if we kind of had it scheduled to be on the start of the 17th.
That's the way I've set my vacation.
If it's.
When is your vacation?
July 17th, that Monday.
Yeah, mine's, mine starts that day too.
My vacation is to take off from work to attend the budget workshop that Monday at nine o'clock.
Can you not change that?
Well, I mean, I said it because we had this conversation.
Right, but can you change your vacation then?
Um, I'm not certain that I can, no, ma'am. I don't have that certainty. And that's why I want to confirm that going, going through that workshop.
Well, you know, what we need to do is when we set these dates, and the way we've always done it in the past, uh, each commissioner was given dates to choose from. And then we all sent in the dates that we were available. And then the administrator, I guess, said, okay, these are the dates that everybody was available. That didn't happen this year. And I'm adamant that when we have a budget workshop, then I'll be present. I can't change, I've already got airline tickets and everything. I can't change mine. But if I had another job and had asked for a day off, I probably could go back and say, okay, I don't need that day off. I need this day off. If I was willing to work with everybody on the board to make it right for everybody.
Well, Commissioner, you know, if you want to direct that personally to me.
I do.
You can.
I do.
And if I were listening in the workshop when it was discussed, I'd know when that was, was coming along. And I'd know when to schedule my airline fare and not to. And that's exactly why I participated in that discussion so that in a responsible fashion to work with this board, that I could schedule to be in attendance. So thank you for addressing me with that and, and let me just make it very, very clear. After having that discussion and having numerous discussions in, in respect to that, I scheduled a vacation day to attend the budget workshop because that's part of my job. And that's the way I prioritized it. And so that time for me is, is basically set. So it's not a matter of unwillingness or narrative that for whatever reason you'd like to spend that into. But it's a matter of responsibility and diligence having had this discussion in an open workshop. So if you want to make accusations, feel free, but just understand that they're already on the minutes and they're recorded. So it's not some effort against you. I certainly have no personal problem with you as a commissioner. But I had and understood when the projected time was going to be, which basically has been the same way every time that I've participated in a budget workshop. I've never filled out a wish list in respect to a date that I could or couldn't be in attendance. I've understood that it's going to be basically that same Monday of July, and I've adjusted my schedule accordingly. That's my job and I aim to continue to do. So thank you.
Here is there any possibility of another time the next week?
So we, if, when I was talking to staff that would not have it ready before 17th. 17th and then between the 17th and the 27th, we can do any of those days.
The 17th and the 27th?
Yes. So, but, but, but look, we, we did it in two days last year. So we had to have two days last year. Um, we usually schedule three just in case we need one. I do have a suggestion maybe for the future that we do it when we do our, um, annual calendar. Then we can go ahead and tentatively set those dates. Uh, because there is a tight window there and that's the problem. It's a tight window between everybody turns in budgets, getting revenues. The property appraiser doesn't even certify the revenues until July 1st. And then all that has to be put into the budget prepared. And then we have to have our public meetings and that has to be, um, when we do the public meetings has to be coordinated with the, um, school board because they, they have to have theirs at a certain time. We have to have ours at a certain time. And so we have to coordinate that with other governmental agencies. So I'm just explaining why the window's so tight.
So what are the dates then, other than the 17th, what dates do you have, that you're looking at?
We have the 20, we have between 17th and the 27th, any of those days.
Okay, can we combine then and do it in two days? We've done that in the past. Okay, can we combine then and do it in two days, since we've done that in the past?
That, that's up to y'all, what, what days is?
Any, uh, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, any of those days is fine with me.
When do you come back?
I'll be back on Sunday the twenty-third, so I'm available the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh.
But we got another issue with Commissioner Newman has already scheduled his vacation, and, but I'll just say for me, I mean, the last three years, I've, we've done just the same, set times, I guess, for the last three years, so I'm not getting anything on my, put on my plate for the last three weeks of July.
Last year, the first one was on the eighteenth, we just normally follow around that first Monday of that.
I'm just asking the board, that's all. I'm just, I, I'm asking the board, could you please, you know, help me so that I can be here?
I don't, I don't have it, but we've got a, we've got two conflicts here. You've scheduled vacation to go out of town, and we've got another commissioner that has scheduled vacation to be at the meetings that I think we probably talked about some time back, so I just, I, I'm not trying to disrespect you in no kind of way, I really, I'm not. I, I mean, I wanted to work for you, and I think you do bring a lot of value in these meetings for sure, no, no, if anything, about it, but...
I think though that we've got, we've got four other days, we've got four days that we can work in these, these workshops so that everybody can be there.
Well, you know, like I said, we have, again, we have two conflicts. I mean, your conflict is you taking off for vacation to go out of town during this window, and your Commissioner Newman has taken vacation from work to be at these meetings, so I just...
Commissioner Ditt, so are you willing to help me so I can be here at these? And Commissioner Moody, we, we've made accommodations for you when you go, like last year, when you were going on a trip out west, and we said we would not, we would have changed the, um, uh, you know, our voting for who was gonna be, um, chairing all that, because you were gonna be out of town, so, you know, I'm just asking for consideration so that I can be a part of the process.
This is, that's a workshop, that's not nothing we can vote on anyway. I mean, in a workshop, you can't make no decision on anything anyway, you just talk about it.
But there's a lot of talking that goes on, and there's people that does, that presents, and I want to be a part of that process.
At the end of the day, I'll be here, whatever day it is, it's really for you two to work out.
Yeah.
I can't be here, I can't be here on the seventeenth.
You're a joke, I went on vacation, I got loaded into the bus. So I...
That, that didn't happen, Jim, I'm sorry, that was not planned, that was not planned.
Yeah, I know it was.
Nobody knew you were gonna be gone.
Anyway, at the end of the day, it's all irrelevant, you two, you two would need to work it out, I can't work it out.
Commissioner, are you willing to try to help me out?
I can try to look, Commissioner Feigl, but, I mean, again, you know, I set this because of that being the designated budget here.
But can you please try to work it out?
I can certainly look, but I, I will tell you, I mean, once we kind of set these dates, there are other, other folks that set their schedules.
I'll just try to see if I can change my airline of, of reservations, and I'll meet my family out there, they're gonna be there on the fifteenth. So I can try to change my reservation so I can be here, and then I'll...
I understand, Commissioner.
And then I'll leave and, and meet them later in the week, because it's that important to me, that I am part of the process.
Let me, let me make something clear, because, you know, this tends to be a continued rhetoric or, or habit.
You know what, I have had enough of you, I have heard, I have heard enough of you for the last day of my time.
Congratulations.
All right, let's move forward. So you're gonna try...
I am tired of your mouth.
You're gonna...
Big and mutual.
You're gonna try to change your schedule to make these meetings on the seventeenth.
Everybody else is too.
So when do we want to have the second one? If you're doing the first one on the seventeenth, when do you want to have the second one? If we did the eighteenth, that would just, do we do back to back, or do we do?
We had a tentative schedule out there of the twentieth or the twenty-fourth for the second one.
Uh, so, if we...
Twenty-thirtieth is on Sunday?
If we did the first one on the seventeenth, and we did the second one on the twenty-fourth, Commissioner Feigl will be back, right?
Yes.
So, is everyone okay with the twenty-fourth, or do we, how do we?
Is the first one or the second? I mean, I, I'll do every day.
The first one's on the seventeenth. And we don't have, we didn't have a date for the second one already, have we already?
We, 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 there were two dates put out there, the twentieth or the twenty-fourth.
Someone have to get Thursday? The seventeenth is the first one. When does the board want to have the second?
I'm down with this lady. I'm sick of him, and I don't want to hear it no more.
Maybe it's the second budget meeting, if he's not a part of the...
I don't care what you do.
All right. So, when does the rest of the board want to have the second meeting?
Put them all on that week, I'll be gone if you want to.
We can do that, too? So, when do we want to have the second meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's work for staff, I mean, but the twentieth work for you, Commissioner.
Any day works for me.
Was that, was that part of what balance or boundaries you got there? I don't know.
Not work for you, yes?
Any day works for me. I, I, I told you, I'll whatever my time side up. Anytime I'm glad I'm good, I just do, I wouldn't sell it, Clark made you rest of the work, but I agreed to it the other day, and I, it was all... The twentieth okay with you?
What about the twenty-fourth, I mean, is that, is that out of the question?
I'm okay with the twenty-fourth, I mean, because I mean Commissioner Feigl will be back. Everyone okay with the twenty-fourth?
For the second?
For the second meeting?
Yeah.
You agree with that?
All right, so seventeenth and then twenty-fourth, that's what we'll get.
All right.
Right, we need another one to be on the twenty-fifth, hopefully we can get it all done, two days left.
Okay. Twenty-three, the insurance committee to present health insurance renewal.
Oh, that's me. His are spinning over here.
Did everybody forget, we still got to move on?
All right, so, you know, when I was here last time, we were talking a little bit about the insurance, and it, um, you know, I know that Commissioner Feigl had, um, thought about maybe doing RFP, and I think Commissioner, um, Ian Kinglish may have, uh, suggested that too, so we went back, and we, we went back and we talked to our, to our, um, agent about, um, that possibility. So we, I don't know if I told y'all last time that we did get a renewal rate of a four percent. So actually, what happened last year was we had a four percent increase, but we had, we got a, um, a holiday, a payment holiday, so it was kind of a med, like, it didn't like, there wasn't an increase, even though technically it was an increase, it was also the payment holiday, they gave us a credit, and we didn't have to budget any extra money. This year, they, they came back with an original nine, twenty-nine percent increase, went back to them, and they, and they said, you know, that's not gonna work, so they said, well, we'll give you a rate pass without the payment holiday. So that, that means it's really a four percent impact on the budget, which is about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of impact on the budget for that increase. So, we did talk to them about the possible of an RF, of an RFP, we talked to our agent about that, and we got a letter about that today. I can read you a little bit about that, because things are changing in the insurance, insurance world, especially when it's related to government entities. So there's some statutes out there, and the auditor general has made some, um, audit findings with some different areas about, governments having an insurance agent that is being paid condition by an insurance company and doing RFPs for government entity. So they believe there's, you know, there's possibility of them steering the government entities to places they don't, in the private industry, they don't, they don't have those kind of regulations, but when it comes to the public, they started doing that. So, basically, the letter says that, um, due to Tether County B O C C being a pu, a Florida public entity in which taxpayer dollars are used to fund county employee insurance, our involvement with procurement process must be limited to contract effectuation and agreed upon scope of services only. Reason we cannot be involved with or employ Tether County procurement process is that any licensed and appointed agent who receives any remuneration from any chosen carrier related life and health insurance policy reduction has a conflict of interest. Um, then it says, Foddermore, Centria Public Risk cannot be involved with performing carrier or agent contract audit processes because of contract arises, we cannot audit ourselves, or for the matter of the carrier we receive compensation directly from. Lastly, um, as public entity, the R, the RFP procurement process must be handled according to Florida sunshine, where Tether County B O C C is just rated in the records for sunshine compliance. So it does say here that if assistance is needed, um, carrier and the agent contract audit processes, we can recommend Tether County B O C, B O C C to hire a qualified licensed and non-appointed consultant. So that was their recommendation. So, I, we did meet with the insurance committee today, and their recommendation was to, you know, to the board was to accept the renewal this year, with the four percent, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, not a paper budget. And if the board is interested in doing an RFP and doing something different, then we would want to look to hire a, a consultant to help us get through that process to get something different. Now, we did, because of the changes this year, and it was, we didn't realize it, but it was in our plan, there's a $25,000 credit, which is what was anticipated the cost of a consultant to be, so we, they, we will get a $25,000 credit this year that we could use to pay a consultant for next year if we choose to go that route. So we've got two options, one is, really don't think we can do the RFP this year, because we don't have the expertise to do it, and, um, and order the time to probably get it done before we need to renew in October. And actually, we do our open enrollments before that, so we, we do our enrollments August, and we really like to try to have August done by August. So, um, so, two things, one is if the board's okay with accepting the four percent this year, and, you know, we don't have to make the decision tonight, but if we're interested in doing something different, then, you know, maybe we'll look to hire a consultant to do that.
I don't, I'll just clarify what I stated, that on this subject, the last meeting is, you know, I don't have a problem with the agent that we had working, but I think what I understood is this agent owner or whatever, so, business, whatever, and turn around on the other side and, and wanted to be a consultant. Well, I, I don't play, why do I need to talk before we got a business that's already, it should be able to price their own business. If they can't price their business, then that's why I'm like, we give them RFP, give them a RFP, to get somebody that could, that, that could give us prices of interest, I mean, who owns business and can't give me a price?
I completely understand, we went from having one person, and now we gotta have two. And, but it's my understanding that that's, that's the way that it's supposed to be for governmental entities, so. Now, we can do it ourselves, like, we can do the RFP ourselves, and that's within the law, but, you know, that, that's, we're gonna be changing things and evaluating data and analyzing things like that for insurance, I don't know that we got that expertise to do that.
I'm not, I took it that we were gonna have this consultant come on and be a part of this year over here, but I mean, if it's for, hey, if we need to look into a consultant because we're looking to put out during an RFP, then I can...
And I think that is what I probably said was, is that we would be looking to someone to have year after year after year, but we don't have to do that, we can, we can do a one-year contract, you know, and say, hey, we're gonna go for one year, and then, and we need to extend the contract or whatever we can. Um, one good thing about what we had before with Albritton, they did so to Essentria, who this letter came from, Essentria. The good thing about what we have there with that deal, that Albritton had, now Essentria does, and they bought out Albritton, if we do have Crystal, she's back there in the back, and anybody, any of our employees, she does all, handles all the new enrollments, and any of our employees can go to her with any issues they have, and she looks it up, and I mean, that's, you know, we don't pay for that, other than through, you know, our commitment and conditions that they make. So, you know, we like, we like that setup, and if we ever got away from that, we would want to look at, you know, a staff person in-house to do the same things that she does, because it's valuable to our employees, so, um...
Crystal transitioned over to the new company.
Yeah, she works for Essentria.
I work for Essentria now, I don't work for Joe anymore.
But she does what she's always done.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, you know, if we want to handle it two different ways, if we want to, you know, uh, vote tonight on the, um, accepting the renewal, four percent? Four percent?
Yes.
Um, and then, um, you know, talk later or more about RFPs, or if y'all know, if you want to go ahead and do that, or, I don't, I don't...
I don't even know a P.
I don't even know a P, no, no, myself. Uh, Commissioner, you, Commissioner?
I'm fine with renewal, and I didn't understand when it was brought up about this consultant business anyway, that's just wasted money for them.
It's been a difficult thing for all of us to understand.
The insurance we got looked real good to me, considering other insurance companies I've had deals with, and we've had a good, good run with that, I'm picking up a debt for the way it was.
That, you know, the way it's, the way that it's, the way that the insurance committee, and when it was, when Albritton had, you know, was our agent, one of the things that was set up was for this, for the loss ratios, which is what, what drives pretty much everything, is the loss ratios, was to set up to always be around between seventy-five and eighty percent, because that's where you want, you, if you're, if you're at sixty or sixty-five, or, or fifty-five, the insurance companies make a lot of money off of you. If you're in the eighties, then they're losing money, and then they're gonna come back and jack up your price the next year, so you always want to try to stay around that seventy-five to eighty percent, and we've always kind of, we've always kind of floated around there, which is the reason we haven't had any big increases. So if we did go with something else, we could disrupt that, you know, and then start seeing these up and down.
I'm not here.
But...
It's like Medicare, we're talking eighty percent.
Yeah, but then you start seeing these up and down premiums again, and it starts disrupting things, but, you know...
I don't, I don't have an issue with coverage myself, I mean, I thought the time, I heard some talk on not-so-good coverage, coverage, I'd say it's probably pretty outstanding, and...
It's a rich, I think it's a rich, I think it's a rich one.
But I, my question was, again, if I'm the consultant, I, somebody hasn't liked me, I don't have consultants, so, but as far as how we are and moving forward, the way we are now, I, I would...
I, I'd be willing to make a motion, accept this report.
I would too, I'd second that motion. If four percent was on my insurance piece out, I'd kiss somebody.
All right, we have a motion, and a second, too. You think that's a valid favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Can I just, real quick, because Chris just reminded me, all the other things that we have, the generals, the vision, life, all that can stay the same.
Everything's got to be...
I didn't, I didn't want to admit that it's all, all that, didn't increase at all at all, stayed the same.
Good to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Board to consider approval of draft job description for Southeast technician, given by twenty-one.
With the recent retirement of our long-time employee, um, Mr. Vito, as the custodian for the courthouse, for the administrative complex, and the driver's license office, um, Gary and I and some of the other constitutional officers were considering maybe trying to expand the job description to include not only custodial services, but maintenance support for the courthouse and the administrative complex. Um, so we did, and this is, you know, for a couple of things, but our, our maintenance tech that we primarily have is, he has a lot of facilities to keep up with. So we feel like this would, um, and we, you know, add more facilities from time to time. We feel like this would help him, um, with his workload, and also have someone at the courthouse to do light maintenance. Now, you know, anything, I think, too demanding, we would certainly still reach out to Mr. Richard, but this is more for support. Uh, so we did, uh, we did come up with a draft job description that we would like to at least advertise to see if we have any interest in it. Now, we understand there are a lot of duties listed, and I don't know that we'll be able to recruit someone, but we feel like we could at least try and see what we came up with. In the meantime, we have someone who's working part-time to help with some of the cleaning, and offices are pitching in themselves to empty trash and, and, you know, vacuum and try to keep up. So this would delay filling that custodian position, but at the same time, if we had someone who was able to provide more services, um, we would like to at least attempt to, um, advertise that position.
I'm fine with it, I'll make a motion, but I need a major.
Yeah, a motion to approve. You have a motion to approve the second, take a, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You get the next one, too? We're commercial items.
Oh, wait, I skipped workshops. I skipped the June workshop that night.
Yeah, please, underneath that, it's on.
Okay, so, um, we do need to discuss the scheduled June workshop that is currently scheduled for the twenty-seventh. That is the date that several of us will be traveling to Orlando to attend the Florida Association of Counties Annual Conference. So, my question is, if we can possibly just cancel the workshop for June and, um, and try to fit it in sometime in July, when we have a better idea of when all of the workshops are going to be scheduled, the budget workshops?
Cancel June?
If that's okay with you.
Does anybody have a pick of that?
Oh, I can't stand that. We just gotta have that workshop.
Well, now, comrades, we could have it on this weekend, if you're willing.
Here, Mr. Fisher, we know we're gonna say, Greg.
I'll do it for you.
You ain't gonna sleep me there. Are you close? I don't want to go into the calendar. Make a motion to cancel the June, uh, what's that? Make a motion to second, cancel our June twenty-sixth workshop, all in favor?
I can make a comment about that, because I think our, um, uh, auditors were planning on presenting the audit at that time, because they have to, they have to present the audit by June the thirtieth. So, I talked to them, and they said, as long as they can email it to us, that considers presenting it, and then they'll come, talk to a meeting in July to actually go over it with us. But if you get the email, just know that they're doing that because they have to meet that June the thirtieth. Uh, that, I don't know.
Okay. Still, Mr. Pound, we just got new people.
Yeah, they're sold out.
Okay, um, for me, I just, I just wanted to give the board a little bit of a, an update on our volunteer firefighter program. We did hold orientation on, um, that's where you stop, I apologize. And we had, we are hopeful that we have six volunteer firefighter candidates that will attend class. The classes begin on June twenty-seventh and will be held Tuesdays and Thursdays at six P.M. So, currently, our fire chief is teaching that class. I am very hopeful that we either are awarded, uh, a safer grant in order to, you know, fill a position, to take that burden off him, or possibly, we have, uh, two current firefighters who have to sit for their exam in order to become instructors. But we'll, we'll follow through with that and, and see how that goes. Um, also, now that state budget is, is finalized, um, it looks like the funding for steam hatchy, shady road fire stations, and our product grant for new softball field are all intact. Uh, we should receive grant agreements within the next several months. The funding request for each station was, um, two million dollars for each station. We actually received a million for each. So, obviously, we'll have to take a look at those, the scope of work and come up with a plan. Um, you know, I would remind the board that we do need to complete Station Two sooner rather than later. So, we're looking at potential, you know, projects for three fire stations, and we'll discuss this during budget workshops as well. Um, and we'll bring some, you know, potential, if I can find any funding for the balance, I will definitely, I definitely will. And so, I'm working on that, I can't make any promises, but we're, we're still certainly, um, attempting to find some funding for the balance. We don't know exactly what the cost of each project will be until really we, um, we advertise a request for a proposal, but, um, we'll, we'll just continue to work that issue. We also receive funding, or we will receive funding for our slurs radios for all the agencies within Taylor County. That is very helpful, and I'm very grateful to the state for providing that funding for our, um, for our first responders. I believe that it will have an impact of over a million dollars for us. Thank you.
How much is the charge for not attending the hospital?
It's your charge, holy... I'm the last man standing. Oh, it's coming. I appreciate you letting me hang around.
I just wanted to take this to be the easiest item on your agenda. I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Lauren Fason Clark, and as of a week ago yesterday, I became the interim CEO of your hospital. I am new to the hospital, but I'm not new to, I mean, I'm new in this role, but not new to the hospital. I've served on the board for ten years, along with Mark O'Brien, as representative for Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare. Back in twenty-twenty-one, in the middle of a pandemic, we had a gap in leadership. Tom Stone left, or Chris Schmidt started, because it was gonna take him ninety days to start. The board said, I can't handle another transition. And they asked me if I would step in as the interim CEO back then. And I will be honest with you, it was the most, one of the most rewarding and career-changing moments, those ninety days. It was a crazy time, we opened the ICU unit, I mean, we were doing a lot. And those people and that place has stuck with me since then. So, and now, we found ourselves in another gap in leadership, I was asked to step up again. And I want you to know, my commitment is to stay for the long haul, hopefully, this time, and to make that hospital a thriving center for quality healthcare. We are overturning every stone right now, looking for efficiencies, looking for new services to grow, looking what this community needs, because people should not be going back and forth to Tallahassee for their healthcare. I see the hardships when they get there, I've seen it from both ends. And my commitment is to help build those bridges and relationships, to bring more services locally, bring more doctors locally. And I just wanted to take a minute, Lawanda was very gracious to have a meeting with me last week and listen to me for an hour and a half and one minute, but I was very excited, because you have incredible people that work at this hospital, and they have been beat up, and I'm ready to step in from the sidelines and help them make this a viable business where people can get quality healthcare. So, I invite you guys to please, um, come meet with me, come tell me your concerns, what your constituents are saying. I would love your input, because I want you to be partners in helping make this place a great place for healthcare. Um, because the staff are all ready, they're working really hard to make it happen. I just wanted to take a minute, introduce myself, too, I have an open door. Lawanda has my cell phone number, please use it, let me know how I can help.
You wanna comment, conservatives, republicans, and how they're doing now? What's the message, like, Mr. Dick? Uh, there we go. Sir? There we go. I'm past it.
Yeah, I'm thankful for the folks who came out and not with all of the topics that were on the, uh, agenda and to share information and, and their input, so, that is, is a help, and I certainly appreciate it, but I'm having that trip, so, thank you.
I'm just rocking.
All right. You're here, you have a motion to adjourn my vote. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Don't never let me borrow a penny like.